I now call this regular meeting of the committee of the whole to order at five thirty-three P M. Can you please call the roll?
Ms. Pearson?
Present.
Ms. Chavez?
Present.
Ms. McCall?
Present.
Ms. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Ms. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now take a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. As we start each board meeting, it bears reminding that the mission of Rockford Public Schools is to collaboratively engage all students in an equitable first-class education for a changing world. We are now on to the regular portion of the meeting. The first item is item two A, meeting minutes from June third, two thousand twenty-five. Are there any changes, corrections, or additions to the meeting minutes? If not, they will be accepted as submitted. Thank you. And Ms. Stanford will lead, or Ms. Haley will lead the stakeholders committee.
Good evening. It's time for the super, uh, for the stakeholders committee portion of the meeting tonight. Uh, let's start by sharing our twelve-month agenda. We do not have a featured presentation this month. We want to remind board members of the opportunities available to interact with our students, families, and community each month. Please make sure you check the board calendar on RPS two oh five dot com on a regular basis for the most up-to-date information. Now, let's look at all of the good things that are happening in our district. Our BPAC leaders, bilingual department and community partners helped bring the multicultural fair and celebration of cultures to life. The event featured a live DJ, food trucks, and captivating dance performances representing countries like Ecuador, Mexico, and Guatemala, plus heartfelt songs from our very own Swahili students. BPAC members attended the nineteenth annual statewide summit for bilingual parents in Oak Brook. Presenters covered important topics designed to support members in their roles and responsibilities, including equitable funding and services for English learners, family engagement, pre-K through twelve, grade twelve educational programs, higher education opportunities, parental leadership and advocacy, plus immigrant immigrant and community issues. RPS two oh five was well represented at Rockford Memorial Day, Rockford's Memorial Day Parade. Bands from all over, from all four high schools and some of our middle schools marched through downtown to honor and remember fallen heroes. The family and community engagement department had the privilege of hosting our annual volunteer celebration at the Nicholas Conservatory. We came together to honor the incredible volunteers, board members, and community partners who support our students from K through twelve. Your time, heart, and commitment truly light the way. Thank you for helping us build stronger schools. Field day took place at elementary schools across, across RPS two oh five. Students had a blast with limbo, duck, duck, goose, parachute fun, tug of war, and more. Big thanks to our awesome teachers and volunteers for making it a day full of smiles. Next, Westview Elementary celebrated success at its Students Who Excel Awards ceremony. They honored growth in literacy, math, talents in music, art, and P E, strong attendance, and outstanding citizenship. It was a great way to end a school year and recognize hard work and achievement. This spring, ten schools participated in our Bags program, and just over one thousand students earned their spot at an incentive trip to the UW Sports Factory. This celebration recognized students who demonstrated strong attendance, academic achievement, and positive behavior. Students spent the day enjoying a variety of recreational activities, including hockey, volleyball, inflatable obstacle courses, and more. Thanks to our continued partnership with the Rockford Park District, the Bags program continues to reinforce the importance of showing up, doing your best, and making great choices every day. Next, we are proud to celebrate the incredible accomplishments of our students from the Extended Campus Program as they graduated from Project Search at Embassy Suites and at Mercy Hospital. Project Search is a nationally recognized program that provides students with disabilities, the opportunity to, um, be rec, uh, the opportunity to gain hands-on experience through a series of internships and real-world environments, or real-work environments. Through our partnership with Ramp, students receive additional support and guidance, guidance as they build valuable employment and vocational skills that prepare them for competitive, integrated employment. Throughout the school year, our students have worked diligently alongside staff, gaining, gaining not only job skills, but also confidence, independence, and a strong sense of purpose. Congratulations to all our graduates. We can't wait to see all the amazing things you'll achieve next. It's a wrap for Westview's fifth graders. Their moving on ceremony kicked off with a hallway cheer parade, then capped off with a celebration in the school's gym with speeches, certificates, and a video that brought all the feels. Next, Spring Creek Elementary gave its fifth graders a joyful send-off with a clapout on the last day of school. Students and staff lined the halls to cheer them on. The celebration continued outside with families and special guests, Hammy, Poopsy, Rally, RV, and Chuck E. Cheese. All the mascots. The two thousand five, or the two thousand twenty-five RPS two oh five graduation celebration returned to the BMO Center on June sixth and seventh. Families came together to share the achievements of their loved ones while creating lasting memories. More than eighteen hundred students from all five high schools walked across the stage to receive their diplomas. And now here's a highlight reel from the celebration. Wonderful. Congratulations, class of two thousand twenty-five. Next up is items of note with our community partners. Swing by Ernie's on Wednesday, July sixteenth, from four to seven, for dinner and for drinks. A portion of the purchases will go back to the Golden Apple Foundation. Tip to guest bartenders from RPS two oh five very well. Proceeds, proceeds support scholarships, grants, and recognition programs for teachers. This summer, RPS students ride our M T D free with a valid school ID. No ID, no problem. Bring proof of identity and RPS embroement to our M T D headquarters on Melbury Street. A student ID is just two dollars, ride all summer long. On our vibe, a big win for Auburn High School at the Future Problem Solving Program International World Finals. Naisha Moorhead took first place for her powerful short story, Living Archives. And does Janique Love place six? Their global success highlights the strength of Auburn's academic program. Read more on the two oh five vibe. And now it's time for our legislative news. The recent passage of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six state budget reaffirms Illinois's, Illinois's strong commitment to the future of public education. While this year's fifteen point eight five billion education budget reflects an overall reduction due to the planned phase-out of federal pandemic, pandemic relief funds, the state has increased general fund support for education by nearly two hundred and seventy-nine million dollars. Evidence-based funding will see an increase of three hundred and seven million dollars this year. This helps to close the funding gaps for the late, the, the least-resourced districts, raise opportunity and achievement, and build equity into the foundation of our educational system. The Teacher Vacancy Grant Program will receive thirty million dollars to continue addressing staffing shortages in the districts with the greatest unfulfilled positions. The program has already supported fifty-four hundred new hires, helped retain eleven thousand educators, and helped fifteen hundred staff begin the licensure process. And now for some internal and external news. Need to enroll your students in the district or update your address? Don't wait until August. The RPS two oh five Welcome Center is open all summer long, Monday through Friday at the five oh one Seventh Street location. The only location. Stop by early and beat the back-to-school rush. Next, the RPS two oh five board attended the Founder's Commission Diamonds Gala at the Hard Rock Casino. The event featured Auburn High School alum and NBA All-Star Fred Van Vliet. Proceeds benefit the Founder's Commission and Van, and Van Vliet Family Foundation. Two certified five oh one C three charitable organizations dedicated to uplifting Rockford through community and youth engagement, education, and more. RPS was proud to sponsor Rockford's thirty-fifth annual Juneteenth Celebration at Seneship Park. Students were recognized and board members attended. We had a table showcasing our special programs. Family and Community Engagement Liaison Virgil Hobson received the Trail Blazer Award. Next, and finally, do any board members have anything they'd like to share regarding any events you've attended or any interactions you've had in the community?
So Think Big eight one five had their, um, grant opening and ribbon cutting, and I believe that they have been engaged or in communication with RPS two oh five, specifically East High School. So I want to thank, uh, the workers, um, the visionaries of eight one, um, Think Big eight one five, Dr. Sheila Hill, and Mr. Dante, um, Matthews, um, for all of their hard work along with their entire team. It was an awesome event. Of course, parents were there, and I never, um, miss the opportunity to engage with parents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall.
Um, I just want to reiterate, you know, thank you for, for everyone who, um, finished out this school year and the graduations and everything. Um, I just want to highlight, like, you never know where you'll find former RPS two oh five scholars and graduates. I was at a Tyler the Creator concert last night at, uh, United Center, and one of the opening acts performers, um, um, music composers or whatever, I forgot the official title. acts performers, music composers or whatever, I forgot the official title, was a graduate from Auburn High. So that's a world tour that they're going around, you know, providing this musical stuff. I can't remember if he was in Capitol or not, but they're everywhere out here in the world. We're world changers, and RPS produces just fantastic talent. Other than that, you saw in the pictures, I was everywhere. I can't remember all the different places, but just keep it up, keep inviting me, and I love engaging, so thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, that's Bennett?
Sorry, my mic's a little down. Okay, June was very busy, so I'm not gonna go anywhere in July, just so everybody knows that in advance, no. So I was asked by Mr. Logeman to come to Auburn, and so I was able to speak to, I think, three classes of AP Government, AP Geography, I want to say is what the title was, but classes just about being an elected official and being a school board member and kind of how policy is created, what they can do if they don't agree with a policy, what they can do if, just overall, like, how can they be in charge of their education? And they asked very great questions, so that was an awesome opportunity at Auburn High School. I also went to tour at Lockwood. I was with the Rockford Park District staff and toured their Parks Equine Center, and I know there's some discussions about Rockford Public Schools in the near future partnering to provide equine therapy to our students and families. So that was a really great tour. I have some pictures that I'll send maybe to your committee, but lovely facility, and it's, people are able to go there and visit, and access services on their own, too. And then, this past week, I also went to the Chamber, Rockford Chamber, a few of us were there as well, hosted a Mental Health is Healthcare series, and so about an hour and a half of conversation panel regarding mental health, which is very important, so how it impacts business community and kind of how all of us can support and be engaged in the work. And then, finally, Alignment Rockford and Severson Dells opened a toddler garden at Severson Dells, and so my children and I went there on Friday, and it was a struggle to get them to leave once it ended, but it was lovely. So they have various stages throughout Severson Dells in their Grove area, and so you can scan a QR code, and there's all kinds of Alignment Rockford Basics for Youth. So as a parent, I could already have a few ideas of what I'd like to do with my children, or I could scan the QR code and all kinds of different resources pop up, activities. It was a really, really great experience. And one final thing to add, speaking of graduation, a constituent reached out to me about their concerns about the late time on the Friday graduation. So the family in particular, given the time it ended, weren't able to take pictures because it was dark outside, so that was something that did not occur to me. And so when it was brought up, I forwarded it to Mr. Carpenter as well, just so that way we were all aware of it, and when we're having conversations for next year in particular, of just kind of being mindful of when the sun is setting and when people would be able to have the opportunity for photos versus being very late at night out on a Friday night. So just wanted to make note of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanford.
I just wanted to say thank you. It's an honor always to be involved in graduations. It's the highlight of the year, really, for me. I enjoyed them very much. I was able to make all of them this year, which is an accomplishment. Also, our Brothers for Change group had a very successful town hall meeting last week. It was great to see families come out and enjoy the conversation, and can't wait to see where that group heads us. That's it.
Ms. McCall?
I was gonna comment on the Brothers for Change as well. I admitted that. It was a great town hall, as Ms. Stanford had alluded to, so thank you to Dr. Reed and the entire group, and I'm looking forward to the things that are coming up in the future from Brothers for Change as well as for Sisters for Change that's coming as well, so keep up the good work with those groups. Sorry, I neglected to mention that. I was there at the town hall, and it was great. Also, we had our 205 DDS event as well, that was on the same day, literally the same time. So I only made it to one of those, but it was still a great, I heard great feedback from the participants and the attendees at that event as well, so thank you.
I just have a quick comment. So while I understand that we serve at large, I was asked before when community members or constituents from other sub-districts reached out to me that I communicated that. So just so for public knowledge, if there's something going on in Sub-District A, I would like the courtesy to be made aware of so I can support as well. Don't necessarily have to speak, but I could have definitely supported Vice President Bennett. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for your great participation in our community support. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Carpenter?
Thanks. I did enjoy many of the community events that we've discussed already. I did want to take a quick note, a quick minute to welcome Yeshica Goldsmith as General Counsel. I think it's her first day as General Counsel. And thank Lori Holdley for her years of dedication for General Counsel, and she's not here today, but we'll make sure to thank her again. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Phillips and Mr. Director of Transportation, Mr. Smilinich. I went on a tour of the transportation facility today and got some interesting ideas, and it was really interesting the way they work to get 14,000 kids to school every day, so thank you for allowing me to see that.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for your continued dedication to our students and your involvement in community events, supporting our students and the community. If that's all, that concludes the Stakeholders Committee presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett will now lead the Performance Monitoring Committee.
Okay, good evening. So we have quite a few items for discussion tonight, so just in preparation for depending on how far we get into our agenda, should there be additional questions regarding our consent items? We do have them organized by letter again this year, this year, this month, and have them placed in some buckets, and so depending on how far we get, that can be emailed out to everybody as a better explanation, too, so more to come on our timing here. So as we know from our training with ISBE, we're required to get school improvement updates from our nine intensive schools three times per year. How to organize those updates and what format they would be provided to in the board would be guided through our Performance Monitoring Committee. Tonight, we'd like you to consider a proposal which Dr. Jarrett will lead us through.
Thank you very much. Had the opportunity, like all of the board, to attend the April 29th training with the ISBE, which I think was a very positive experience for not only the board but our entire leadership team as well, and that led us with an important task. State code has changed, and when a community is in a school district or supporting schools that are rated intensive, there are very specific protocols, and you can see on the slides here that we would need to hear from those schools on September, in the month of January, and in the month of May. And so, we started a conversation that we would like to now expand to the whole board with Board President Carpenter and Vice President Bennett, as well as some members of the Performance Monitoring Team. And the thought, we weighed a lot of different options, but what we wanted to suggest to the board for your consideration and discussion tonight is an idea of having our committee of the whole meeting starting in September in one of the intensive schools. So that's first thing. So there's nine of those, and that would allow each of those schools to have the chance to host a meeting. We would coordinate that with opportunities for tours, potential student ambassador access, and because one of the real points of emphasis when we talked to the ISBE training staff was this is a team effort and it's a community-based effort, school improvement, and so we want to really experience the journey that these schools are on, that we as a district are supporting, and as a community that we're supporting. So one thing we wanted the board to consider was the idea of a monthly presentation hosted by those schools. Two, there are three reports, so the thought would be rather than having each school report three times and potentially having to do two or three times per meeting, we would have a written report in September, January, and May for all of the schools that are in the intensive status, but highlight one school, that is the host school. A third thing that we talked about, and our school improvement team and district team is really proud of this, our principals are really proud of this, and our faculty and staff, and our board is proud, I think was proud to hear, that we also really emphasize school improvement, not just where it's required in our intensive schools, but it's something that's a discipline with all of our schools. So the final thing the committee would like to propose to the board and discuss this evening and get some direction from the whole board is the idea of perhaps using the stakeholders meeting, which we've done in the past, so that we can have, while all of our other schools are still presenting or creating regular reports on their school improvement journey, we could use the stakeholders meeting as a place when we're doing kind of school or community celebrations at the beginning of the full board meeting. That way, we're not having sort of competing school improvement presentations, but we can also hear from other schools. So that last part has not been fully vetted, but something we talked about and I wanted to share with the group. The first three parts were fully vetted, and certainly there is no requirement that we hear from other schools, but I think we did get some direction that there would be a preference to hear from those other schools, and so we thought we could get to at least 18 formal presentations, and we could hear from all 41 of our schools with written presentations multiple times per year. Couple other things where we're gonna be talking about school improvement through the year that I just want to highlight. The entire month of November, we will be getting our new state data for the 24-25 school year, so what we've historically done is taken almost the entire Performance Monitoring Committee agenda in November, as well as the whole board meeting agenda in November, as well as a December retreat, so that we can be freshened up with the new data. So we may stay away from the month of November because of that intense load, or at least that would be something for the board to consider. So we are contemplating all of those possible ideas with you this evening, and would love your feedback if we're on the right track, or if we need to kind of go back to the drawing board with how we will cover this. But we do think it's crucial that we prioritize the intensive schools. We think it's essential that we hear from all of our schools, not just our intensive schools. We think it's important that the board maintains its commitment to hearing annual performance reviews in the month of November. And one little addition this year, this happens to be the year our three charter schools are up for renewal. So when we get to the month of February, January, February, we will be hearing from all three of our charters who are due for renewal as well. So we are gonna have a busy year of hearing from schools, and that's what we're here for, is the work that's going on in our schools. So with that, really want feedback on the idea of hosting in the buildings, which I think Mr. Carpenter and has really kind of started to float with the rest of the board. One per month, how do we feel about that? And having the intensive schools host, and then adding written reports in, as well as using Stakeholders Committee potentially to hear from some other schools so that we get two per month that way, but not competing in the same meeting. Those were some of our suggestions for the board.
Ms. McCall, just waiting for someone to call on you. It's me.
Thank you, guys, for taking on this task. I think it's a great idea of us getting out into the schools and having meetings. I think it would garner more participation from the parents and the community, you know, being at a neutral, well, I mean, this is neutral, but being at a place that they're more familiar with to create engagement, so I like it. And I like the timeline that has been proposed, so I don't have any questions so far.
Ms. Haley?
So I, too, like the idea of getting out to the school for the same reasons that Ms. McCall mentioned, and I do want to just kind of reiterate the fact that being out in the schools when you're around parents, it's easier for us to approach them and them us, and they engage and they appreciate the fact that you just came up to them and even said anything. So I think that makes ourselves more approachable and accessible. Thank you.
Ms. showers, go ahead. My question is, would there be, like, interpreters on hand, as well as sign language interpreter in other languages? Or how would that be?
I think we can take any suggestions from the board on how to make these meetings as accessible and welcoming as possible. So we're gonna be wide open to suggestions, particularly in school communities where we hope that there's a great parental turnout that would benefit from the services of interpreter. I know we would love to work with that. We're gonna create kind of an advanced team and a schedule so that we can get out and make sure that it's a welcoming environment at the school, and if an interpreter is part of making that environment welcome, we would love to do that.
Ms. Detman, did you add anything? Okay. Okay, Ms. Stanford, and then Ms. McCall.
So let me make sure I'm understanding what's gonna happen. So every month at the Committee of the Whole, we will have our meeting at one of the intensive schools, correct? Then at the regular board meeting, we'll have a presentation from a different school during the stakeholders. Okay. Okay, yeah, and the rest will be written reports at the three intervals, correct?
Yes, with the exception of the charters being, doing a much more thorough process in February, and hearing much more detailed information from all 44 of our schools at the November Committee of the Whole meeting, November board meeting, and December Performance Monitoring Retreat, because that was when we'll have all the fresh information from the state.
Okay, I think it all sounds great.
And then, a conversation we had as well was about the format. So for example, if it's seven slides on a presentation, everybody would fill out the same seven slides, so we could all get used to the template. Schools are also not spending an exorbitant amount of time completing a presentation. They can save all that energy and time when they come in real life to present, but also then we're not having 70 slides per school per month, yes.
Just to build on that, it is our goal to have both a schedule and a template for the board to react to potentially as early as our next meeting or the latest at the August Committee of the Whole meeting, because we want you to give us some feedback with some of our early drafts.
Ms. McCall?
An idea that just popped up, so the whole sneak school of that committee of the whole, will there be any extra communication sent out, maybe, I don't know, piece jar or whatever's being used nowadays to try to encourage the parents of that of that school to attend this meeting?
Yes, that is our plan, and it's an excellent idea.
Ms. Pearson?
Yeah, that was my question. And so I'm thinking that the school will promote, or our communications department can come up with something really catchy to get that message out, as well as our social media, and that way, you know, we could like, share, and keep the communication going. So there is, and hopefully, it will be, I'm expecting anyway, it to be a significant change where it relates to parental engagement. I had an opportunity to send a message during Juneteenth about parental engagement, so this is all working really good. Thanks.
And based on the locations of the schools as well, there will be at least one school in every single quadrant, so we will truly be able to go to every area of the city, so if somebody has any transportation barriers or different barriers, there will be a meeting of the nine close to a majority of people in the city, if I'm saying that correctly. Mr. Carpenter?
Thanks. I was just going to ask about that, I guess, that I had hoped that the meetings in the schools would be, you know, reflect diversity of geography as well as, I guess, different levels, but so are all the intensive schools, elementary and middle schools? I don't think it's on here, but, Auburn is also a high school, okay. Okay, so that we would have high school, elementary, and middle schools. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions that anybody has? So we, everyone? So we, everyone is in agreement to move forward with our plan starting September. Communications will be putting out extra information, so people also know the location has changed. We can post something outside here, so if somebody does arrive here to know it is at this school, this meeting, to make it easier, too. So, okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Christina Miller, Director of Accountability, who will lead us through the annual survey results. This year, we will hear about three key data sets, the Employee Engagement Survey, the Five Essentials, and the Standards of Service Survey. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Christina Miller, Director of Continuous Improvement and Accountability, and I'm doing the annual review of our stakeholder survey results. This will look a little bit different this year in that we had some changes in our surveys. So this slide, we're going to talk, just high level of some of the changes that we had, because the Employee Engagement Survey is our first survey that we'll be talking about. We've been doing that for about 10 years now, that we've been using the K-12 Insight to manage our employee engagement survey, and that will continue. However, we made an adjustment to add the Five Essentials survey, which is the second survey we'll be talking about. The Five Essentials survey includes our certified staff, and this is conducted by a group called UChicago. It is required by ISB to complete, you were just talking about, our summative designations and our school improvement plans. The Five Essentials is one of the elements that's required as part of their school improvement plan. So in order to make sure that that report is the most valuable and beneficial, we made a pivot as a district that our certified staff would take that instead of the Employee Engagement Survey in addition. That survey is very robust, so we wanted to make sure that we were looking at survey fatigue. Our Five Essentials survey also includes our students and our families as participants. And then our third survey that we will be talking about is our Standards of Service Survey, and this is from our building administrators, and it is about our central office performance as customer service. So as we go through each of these, I'll do another review of what each of those mean. So our first one is our Employee Engagement Survey from our non-certified staff. And this year, because it was just our non-certified staff, you can see, I listed those to provide clarity of, we have our paras, our building clericals, central office staff, our facilities, nutrition services, transportation, and health services is all included in that non-certified group. We had a response rate of about 41%, which is on par with our typical response rate for our non-certified. Our overall engagement results, and I'll leave this on for just a brief amount, the engagement survey is to measure our employee engagement and involvement and satisfaction with the morale of their job. So these are the key questions that K-12 Insight uses to help measure that employee engagement of all of our staff. And this is the high-level summary of what is our overall engagement, a 76% average of engaged and highly engaged staff, which is right on our average from last year, when we did include all of our staff. This is K-12 Insight's formula that they use to provide insights into what you should do next with this information. And I'll summarize it, because it's really wordy, but essentially, they understand with each of these questions, how strong does it correlate to an employee's engagement? And how much worth does that particular measure have on having an impact on whether that will change how a site is doing? So looking at that driver rating, it gives you, as a district, K-12 Insight does this analysis for us, that lets us know, here is the things that we should be focusing on. So number one is, I feel that communication between departments is effective and efficient. And the next few are talking about feeling valued and recognized in their work. And then again, at five, is looking at transparent communication at all levels. We've seen these themes for quite a few years, that communication and feeling recognized and valued are areas for improvement for the district. The next slide is that K-12 Insight also does this analysis of what questions are proven to show engagement that we're doing really well on. And overall, almost the entire selection there is direct supervisor, that our employees are having great relationships with their direct supervisors, that they create good communication, they feel consistency, they feel like their direct supervisor makes good decisions and clear directions and expectations for their work. So these are things that we want to continue as we look for improvement. And feedback is a gift, and as we look at this feedback, it means nothing if we don't do anything from it. And so these results were shared in April to all department leaders, and the department leaders then spent time with their staff to collaborate and create strategies, goals, and action plans. Every department completed this of their year-long goal for where they will focus to improve employee engagement. Our next survey is that Five Essentials survey through UChicago Impact. Again, our students, fourth through 12th grade, take this as required by ISB. Our staff, our certified staff, take this, and our families have the opportunity voluntarily to take this survey as well from Five Essential. A little bit about Five Essentials, it's called the Five Essentials because there was a 10-year study by UChicago Impact, that these five elements have a clear correlation that if schools show substantial improvement on these five things, then they are proven to be 10 times more likely to show gains in those indicators below, and they are highly related to our universal goals. So part of our strategic plan and looking at how we can align our work as we move towards that Five Essentials survey to make an impact on what we will be doing next for improvement. Because we have 41 schools and three charter schools, the Five Essentials is very, very robust, so a high-level overview of what those results look like. You can see a breakdown of how many schools. We had two well-organized schools, three organized, nine moderately organized, 15 partially organized, and seven not yet organized. That's rated by the Five Essentials. And those Five Essentials, you can see on there, the effective leaders, collaborative teachers, ambitious instruction, supportive environment, and involved families are the elements that the questions are geared towards. These results were just provided back. Principals got these two weeks ago, their results for how they did on the Five Essentials. And principals are currently working with their leadership teams to provide focus for their improvement. And there's an opportunity for principals to go to an administrator academy this summer to learn more about how to use that Five Essentials results and understand their scores. And last but not least is our Standards of Service Survey, which is also new this year. You've heard through some report structures along the way, we want to be really transparent as we were going through this process, that our Standards of Service Survey is from our building administrators about central office. So our Service Survey is providing the five elements of quality customer service, the acronym spells out RATER, but it's our reliability, assurance, tangibles, empathy, and responsiveness. This is from a standardized customer service survey that was created, what are the things that customers and clients are looking for in order to determine a good service? So you can see the definitions that they use there of what that means to provide a good service in those five key elements. And our district average, I know that's really small, but we had a pretty across-the-board average of 74% in each of those, reliability, assurance, tangibles, empathy, and responsiveness. And to give you a breakdown on each department, how they performed, is we had 17 departments above the district average of 74% in all categories of their customer service in their spring survey. We had four departments that had all but one category above, and just one slightly And we had 14 departments that had two or more categories below the 74%, and you can take a look at those right there. In addition to the survey, all 41 schools completed an in-person problem-solving solution session with the department of their choosing. At the beginning of the year, every school provided verbatim feedback to any department that they wanted to provide feedback to, of areas where they feel like they're being supported highly, and then areas of where they're feeling that they have a barrier that this department could help reduce for them. And afterwards, they selected one department that they would like to go through a session to problem-solve. With those, we had 23 sessions, because there was some overlap with 12 departments with those 41 schools. The departments then, after the session, were required to complete a follow-up with each of the schools and my department, to make sure that they were following through with action plan and progress monitoring any of those commitments. Some overall themes that we found, in addition to communication and processes, we also saw some overall themes that have led to some high-level attention and priorities for next year. So streamlined online registration, some high expectations for staff and students, improvement of placements and transitions, instructional content support with resources and teaching practices, and concentrated professional learning for new teachers. The next steps, we will continue this process, however, we are going to bump up the timeline on this. Some continuous improvement in this continuous improvement was that we noticed that the timeline that we had didn't really allow for a whole lot of time to provide fast feedback. When a school identified an area that needed to be improved, you were towards the bottom, you had to wait till December to get that cycle completed. So we're moving up the timeline, so we can get that faster and a faster response time to our schools. The survey will still continue to do a fall and a spring. And one takeaway that we had from these sessions, because of the timeline that we did have, we saw some evidence of improvement in quite a few of the departments that were selected on their survey. So we know that there is a correlation of having an impact for that personalized support to schools. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Ms. McCall.
Thank you for your presentation. I just had one question. Yeah, they moved me, looking for me. So for the new, to review the new, the new results and things that came out, I heard you mention that there was an opportunity for staff to attend that. Is there any way that we can find out, like, make it where it's kind of mandatory, so we can, so it can be understood, how to read these results? And then, once you understand how to read the results, you know how to, you know, implement the changes and things, or not just an, you know, an opportunity that probably people won't take advantage of, you know, it's the summertime. So I'm just wondering how we can get, drive that to try to help the people understand it.
So all of our administrators each year are required to complete an administrator academy, is what the state calls it, in order to keep their license current? Two years ago, we started to offer in-house these admin academies, because, one, we saw that principals were taking a scattershot of different academies over different content, and we wanted to make sure all of our administrators were all going over the same content that we wanted to emphasize, that we felt was a priority. And then, two, because it's going to be on July 25th, it's going to be on a day where there's no student attendance, because another problem we had is administrators missing student attendance days in order to attend these admin academies. The admin academy on July 25th is, and again, that's for them to keep their license current, is on the Five Essentials. And myself, members of Rockford University, and members of the ROE will all be delivering that content.
Thank you.
I have two quick questions. Do you have, so for the first survey, for non-certified staff, you had the completion rate. For the Five Essentials, do you know the completion rate?
The teacher participation rate was 67%, and our student participation was 98%. And families, because it's voluntary, and it also, the percentage is a little bit harder to calculate, because a family can participate multiple times, so I can't give exact participation numbers, but if we were to just do a denominator, numerator, it's going to be about 18% of our families participated.
Okay, thank you. And then with that, do you have any qualitative data? Like, could people, was there like open boxes or areas that people could provide any kind of information that they wanted to?
Yep. For the Employee Engagement Survey, that our non-certified staff, they had 140 characters that they could provide a open feedback to the district. Our Five Essentials does not have an open feedback. However, our Standards of Service had an unlimited characters of feedback that our staff participated with their principal to turn in for the district.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Haley.
I just have a quick question regarding the sheet that was passed out here. Where it says NA, is that indicative of no one completing the survey? Neither teacher, nor...
The NA means that they did not have enough participation in order to get a score for that category. Sometimes there's some overlap of the different stakeholders that answer those questions. So for example, safety, which I don't know which one that falls into, but if, safety is one of the categories that both students and teachers and families have to take. So if they don't hit enough people, they might get an NA on that category. So I see for that particular line, effective leaders, that would just be teachers that did that. And so enough teachers did not answer those questions, because they are optional, a teacher can choose to skip a question. So that particular school, it looks like not enough teachers chose to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you.
One more quick question, or maybe two more. What does the SWF stand for?
System Wide Framework.
Oh, okay. And then, do you have a definition of what involved families means for that category?
I can give you, it's very robust. The teachers take, the teachers have about 97 questions that they answer on this survey. So the involved families category has probably about 30 questions in there, but I do have a sample survey, if you'd like to look at some of those questions. I can provide an example of what the questions might be involved in the involved families category.
Yeah, that would be great. And then we can pass it around. Thank you. Okay, any additional questions? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, finally, we will hear the final report for the year on academic return on investment study focused on middle school math, discourse, and integrated math in high school.
All right, it's me again. So our academic return on investment study, this will be our end of year, in fact, it'll be the end of the study update. This is our second year on this academic return on investment study on secondary math. If you remember, we've done a beginning of year, mid-year, and now end of year, and this is our end of year plus the end of the study report out. As always, we are leading from the equity vision, and the academic return on investment is entirely designed around that vision, in that an academic return on investment is designed to look at what works for whom and under what conditions. Our universal goals, a reminder, and particularly our two secondary goals of middle school on track and our graduation rate and freshman on track are directly related to the study that you, as a board, selected. Our PDSA process, we will be talking about our two tier-three studies, and just a reminder, we have tier- And just a reminder, we have tier-ones, that we have lots of initiatives that go through a yearly internal review, tier-twos that have a little bit higher scrutiny of looking at how we're doing on a yearly basis on some results. And then the board selected these two tier-threes that we report out three times a year. The purpose of our academic return on investment studies is to do a in-depth analysis of what success and monitoring of our data and those measurements of those outcomes can be. And we're looking for which programs are driving student achievement, but ultimately, we're looking for what is working, for whom, and under what conditions does it work. This AROI process is a 10-step process, and you will see, we are at the very end now. But a reminder, we do some planning, we select what does it mean to be successful in this study and what are we looking at? As again, this is for research, to look at what are we studying? Then we make that design to make sure we're collecting the right data and that we know what the cost of collecting this data might be. And then we do that ongoing analysis, which has been for the last two years. And now is where we look at our insights and take action based off of the study.
Thank you. So why are we studying math? Just a quick reminder here, as the study comes to a close, we selected math specifically because our student data and our standards of practice scores were showing just kind of a drop and a lag compared to literacy and to our elementary scores. And so we thought this was worthy of aligning our attention and our resources to take a look at what's going on and why. It also provides vertical alignment. We have grades six through 12 included in this study, and it is our longest-running curriculum and instructional shifts. And the instructional shifts that we're talking about really came about in 2010, and they were a major change in the world of math education through the Common Core. Just a couple reminders, we've talked about this a couple times before, but integration means that we are blending these math concepts across three years instead of isolating the concepts into single courses. This gives our kids more exposure and more time to master that critical content before they take high-stakes assessments their junior year. Research shows us that when students are taught in an integrated fashion, they do better than when students are taught in those traditional AGA or Algebra Geometry, Algebra II siloed course sequences. And then finally, as I've said, our Illinois learning standards do call for collaboration, discussion, and authentic problem solving. And this is captured in what's called the Standards of Mathematical Practice, and they are eight practices that span K-12. So some of the questions that we were seeking to get answers to in this study are, are teachers implementing and why or why not? Is there a group of teachers that are implementing it maybe at a higher rate or getting better results? Does training amount and intensity affect the outcomes of students? And does a high level of implementation create higher student results? So we're going to walk you through what we found today, and then we're going to end our presentation with some next steps for how we will learn from this study to move forward next year and be responsive to what we heard from teachers. High school integrated math, we focused on three components, and you can see our definitions of success there. We focused on staff training, quality implementation, and student outcomes. We reached almost 100% of our teacher training this year with a coordinated effort and the board's support to move some contracts through to bring CPM training during the contract workday to get as many teachers as possible. This is a sharp increase in teacher training, and those trainings wrapped up in February of this year. Moving forward, we've already identified who the new hires are for this year. We've secured CPM for four-day training, and we're ready to offer this beginning July 28th. When we are in classrooms for the implementation section of this study, we're really looking for three key things. Those three key things are spanned across about, I think, 11 elements, but it's basically this. We want to see students working in groups, talking about math, using math, the language of math, and working together to solve problems. These problems are problem-based lessons, meaning that we're not just asking students to memorize an algorithm or a procedure and then repeat it without understanding it. We're asking them to apply what they know about math to solving real-world problems. And then finally, mixed-spaced practice. This is where integration really shines. It gives students opportunities not just to learn a specific concept on a single day, take the unit test, and move on. It keeps coming back so that they're building enduring understanding that should last through high-stakes testing. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Gallagher to talk about our implementation and student results.
So our second definition of success was implementation. There's no spinning the numbers that you see on there. 22% in terms of the implementation is not good. But I think it's important to understand the definition of success that we have. This does not, that 22%, the converse, it does not mean that 78% of classrooms are not using the instructional resource. We're looking at much more than that, as Heidi had just mentioned, with students engaging each other, with problem-based learning taking place, and mixed-based. So here you can see, broken into three areas, we're looking at 11 total look-for's. And in order to be in that 22% for implementation, you have to have nine or more of those 11 that are observed in a classroom walkthrough. So you can see in that first area with instruction alignment, that is where we're looking at, are they teaching to the standards? Are they using the curricular resource? Are they where they should be in the scope and sequence of the course? From there, we're looking at focus skills. Are the students asking questions of each other? Are they gathering evidence? Are they communicating with each other? And then those additional look-for's were students engaging each other. When we're also looking at our third definition of success, that is student outcomes. Our goal was to see 80% of our freshman students passing, and we had 78% of our students passing. And you can see in the bottom there, the breakdown by high school. Similarly, are our students achieving on standardized tests? We had 61% of freshman students that grew from fall to spring on their STAR assessment, though our goal was 80%. This is a very busy infographic, but this is basically when we're looking at student grades, do they actually reflect learning? If you look in the upper left-hand red area, that's deflated grades. Those are students that are performing at or above proficiency on STAR, but they're getting a D or an F. On the other hand, if you look at the red square on the bottom right, that would represent inflated grades. Those are students who are getting As, but they're underperforming, they're below proficiency in STAR. And while we do see dots in both of those red squares, or rectangles, rather, you can see that we actually do have a relatively strong correlation of grades and student achievement on the STAR test.
For the middle school portion of our study, again, we had three buckets, staff training, quality implementation, and student outcomes. Middle school math is by its nature integrated. Only high school has historically siloed content. But we weren't looking specifically at integrated math. We were really looking at mathematical discourse in this study. In other words, kids using math language, talking about math, trying to solve problems. And for this, we do not have a four-day training, but we do have sort of a suite of workshops that teachers can take. And you can see that in some of our schools, we have 100% of teachers who have taken at least one math-related training, whether that be building-thinking classrooms and a book study, or that is a focus skills instruction, or even I-ready with our new resource. All of those offer support for math discourse. Again, when we're looking in middle school classrooms, we're watching that students are able to explain their own reasoning and their strategies to their peers. We want them to react to the reasoning of others by either justifying or challenging different strategies and ideas. This is healthy back and forth. And for students that are actively engaged in math discourse by thinking and communicating with their peers in a visible way. And again, Dr. Gallagher will come back with our implementation.
So here, again, definition of success for implementation. Though this is better than what we're seeing at high school, it is double high school. It is still far below the goal that had been set. But again, we're not just looking, are they using the I-ready curriculum? We're looking at the instructional alignment again, the focus skills, and the student discourse and students engaging each other. And again, in order to be in that 44% implementation, you had to be observed with nine of these look-for's out of the 11, nine or more, pardon me, during the classroom walkthrough. Student outcomes as our final definition of success, we have 79% of sixth graders earning a passing grade in each of the four quarters, so 1% shy of our goal. But again, are those grades reflecting authentic learning? Here we have 32% of sixth graders that grew on IAR with the goal having been 80. But I know you've also all heard a number of us state before, whereas the STAR test is nationally normed, this IAR used for middle school is the state norm. And remember, in order to meet proficiency, right now, you have to be at the 70th percentile or taller. So I think that explains in part, but of course, not negating that there's work to be done. Again, looking at the correlation, are the grades actually reflecting student learning? So looking at students' grades along the x-axis and their performance on the IAR on the y-axis, you can see that there's very little grade deflation for sixth graders. You only have a handful of students that were proficient or higher on the IAR, that were getting Ds or Fs. And you have a lot more of those scatter plot dots that are right on top of that line. So a much stronger correlation in sixth grade for, pardon me, grades equating to student So with this study, over the term of the research that we've done, we did not find a significant correlation of any of these different teacher attributes with the implementation being done in the classroom. So it didn't matter how many years you taught math, your total years teaching, whether you were just teaching one math class as an overage, or whether you had training or not, that didn't correlate to whether there was implementation taking place. And this is, it don't take a whole day to recognize sunshine. We know that students who attend school and don't get in trouble perform better than peers who do not attend or have poor attendance and many behavior incidents. So implications?
So I mentioned at the beginning that we, you know, we had our teacher support team. They've been with us through the two years of this study, and we learned a lot from them. We gathered their feedback and helped us guide some solutions, which I'll walk you through here in just a minute. They were in each other's classrooms. It really helped create more of an open door, let's see how our neighbors are doing, let's check out instruction in other classrooms, that's always a positive. They highlighted for us the importance of year-long coaching, and they want tips for implementation. And they also really emphasized the importance of teacher belief, that teachers have to believe in the power of student collaboration and a focus on student mathematical discourse. With that belief comes practice. And then they also reinforced for us how critically important it is to have their administrator's support in their school and to have the support of their peers through a healthy professional learning community or a PLC. When we're talking about those grades that maybe aren't totally aligned to standards or we're not seeing the growth that we need, a healthy PLC clarifies what students should learn and be able to do, how we'll know if they've learned it, what we're going to do if they haven't, and what we're going to do if they have. And that drives common assessment, common practice, common understanding. So here's what we learned. Despite being a focus point in our math standards, again, since 2010, when the Standards of Mathematical Practice came out, student collaboration is still a consistent challenge across math classrooms. And it's a challenge not just in our district, but in districts across the nation. Teachers want job-embedded coaching, they want modeling, and they want assistance with their instructional practices. And we also learned that our classroom observations and a digital tool that we adopted this year has really helped to deepen our conversations around this and created a more open-door culture for math instruction. And we're starting to build more habits of being in classrooms more often and using that data to guide discussion at the school level. So what are we going to do? Here are our next steps. Every one of our zone middle schools has opted in to I-ready coaching for the duration of the 25-26 school year. This means that every math department in our middle schools will have onsite coaching through I-ready coaches. And we are going to meet monthly. I have a partnership started with Sarah Brenner. We're going to bring in the principals, those instructional coaches, and our directors of curriculum and instruction to ensure that we're monitoring that data together, we're being responsive to what those coaches are seeing, and we're listening to the feedback that schools are providing to make sure we're all headed in the same direction next year and that teachers are really taking advantage of this onsite job-embedded coaching. Second, oh, I'm sorry, I got them flipped. That was the second bullet point. The first is they've asked for a more streamlined approach in middle school. We have our curriculum scope and sequence, and then we have the order of the units and the resource, and they didn't fully match. There was a few places where they weren't in alignment. Our math teachers came together in the month of June and realigned our scope and sequence to match the resource, to make things much easier to implement. We heard that feedback loud and clear. And then third, our high school teachers said that in our curriculum audit process, they were really concerned not about the guaranteed standards alignment part of their curriculum, but about how much time they have to teach it, given that a lot of our students are coming to them with several grade levels of gaps in their mathematical knowledge. And so in the month of June, our high school curriculum implementation leaders, or CILs, did that prioritization work, and they identified the essential content that students really must learn and teachers must spend time on, and that content that is less critical for those enduring understandings that we're trying to continually come back to over the sequence of three years. And then last, at a district-wide level, we said, we hear you, that the PLC is really a critical system. And so we created an ad hoc committee that formed in April, and it included principals, it included association members, and it included REA leadership as well. And together, we identified the characteristics of a good PLC. We've developed district-wide guidance, and we launched that at the June 10th and 11th School Improvement Workshops. And again, our PLCs are our strongest teacher-based systems for creating common instruction, for providing professional learning, and for guiding those professional conversations around the next steps in instruction. And so that will roll out to all teachers at the August 12th Teacher Institute Day. And before we move on to what's coming next in AROI, I just want to pause and invite any questions that you might have about the math study.
Anyone have any thoughts, Ms. McCall?
Thank you for your presentation. So when we go back, maybe, let's see, the next steps, just one slide up, the next steps for the upcoming school year. You guys have put together all these plans on how to mitigate the differences and things. Could you tell me, like, when you were talking about the deflation, can you go back, can you explain a little bit more about what the deflation grades mean? When the shaded part of those boxes? Like, what does it mean, actually? And how do we, like, how does it come about in the first place?
Yep, great question. And we probably all know students like this who are really, really smart, and they have the content knowledge, but they continue to earn Ds and Fs on their report card. So the question would be either what's being graded or is work not being completed? Are the students disengaged? And in order to really get at the answer to that, we'd have to ask more questions based on kind of the student level. But that's what that means, is that they are showing understanding on standardized tests, and their grades are not reflecting that.
So is there something that, you know, can catch that to try to help, you know, raise those abilities and skills?
Yep, there's two functions in a school, two systems. The first is the professional learning community, because we should be reviewing student data and student grades all the time. And that really gets at everybody, tier-one. The second system that you all have heard a lot about is MTSS. And so when we have those students and our student data comes in and we say, oh, my gosh, that is not what I see in class, that is a student that we need to bring a team around and really talk about, is this a behavior thing? Is it a will thing? Are they not feeling like they belong? What does their attendance look like? And the MTSS team can come together then to decide, what can we do to support this student?
So has that been taking place? Like, you know, why it's not so many dots? Like, you know, why it's not so many dots in there? Or, you know, has it been actually put into practice?
So I think in every school is in a different place. Our MTSS system is a part of our standards of practice. And our standards say that some schools have really well-developed systems that have matured over the last five years. And some schools are still working on that. But that is a part of our service to schools is to help them improve those teams and get better functionality there.
Okay, so if we have schools that are really working well, and some of them have you guys, like, chatted on how to?
Yes, and we have, we're aligning supports to really be very, very targeted with any schools that are struggling to get those up in the next school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question.
Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Detman. So I just have a quick question. When, so research have shown that students learn better with an integrated approach, correct? Did I understand you correctly? Okay, so, and we have consistently used integrated math in hopes that they would do better on testing. So if, let me ask this way. So if DMG or PRISM make a recommendation that we shouldn't use, take a look at curriculum and give a recommendation that we should probably take a more traditional approach to math and prepare for testing, take a different approach in preparation of testing, what then would the administration's approach be?
I would have to defer to Dr. Brown or Mr. Barthol on the results that we would get from PRISM, but I'm not certain that PRISM would give that kind of recommendation at the curricular level for programming. I'm not positive about that. But what I can say is, you know, we are several years into this resource that we're using, and we're sort of on the end of a traditional life cycle of that. And there is so much that has come out onto the market in the last few years. I think it's always worthy of putting fresh eyes on the most engaging instructional materials for our students as well. And so I think that's just part of what we do as a part of our refresh cycle every year. But I'm not confident that PRISM would give us that level of feedback. I think that's really where our AROI study came in.
Thank you. So how much feedback do you receive from instructional coaches where it relates to integrated math?
Very little. We only have, I think, maybe one instructional coach who's assigned to a high school. We primarily speak with our curriculum implementation leaders, who are full-time teachers, and get a differential to take on a leadership position. And they teach math.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Okay, going back to that, so there's only one instructional coach? So when we were looking at this plan, you know, we got all these mitigations, where we're going to meet with the teachers and the teams, whatever, and we're going to have an instructional coach provide intervention and things. You know, what's happening?
We are working with I Ready, who is providing certified coaches to our schools. So each school will have their own coach from I Ready, which is the resource in our middle schools. And then Jefferson is bringing in coaches from College Preparatory Mathematics, or CPM, which is their resource, to come in and do those coaching cycles with teachers.
So, go ahead, Dr.?
I just wanted to add too, there's really a fundamental difference to what instructional leadership looks like at the elementary and middle school level versus the high school. And 1.0 full-time instructional coach is part of the base package at elementary. The model at middle and high school, because you have so many more teachers, that instructional coach being able to push in the classrooms is like a drop in the bucket with having so many classrooms. And so that's why we follow the curriculum instructional leader, the CIL, at middle and high school, because when you have multiple CILs across the different courses that are being taught, then you have more capacity for that instructional coaching at the secondary level.
Okay.
Ms. Stanford?
So the whole study is to find out what's working and for whom. And my understanding is that this is not working. So, and you just mentioned that there have been more resources on the market in the last few years. Have we given any thought to using new resources or some sort of new plan? Are we just staying with what we have even though it's not working?
Well, we're staying with what we have for the moment. We just finished getting to those high numbers of training in February. It would be unlikely that we'd see huge movement from February to May, towards the end of the school year. So our focus now truly is around listening to that teacher feedback to say, they told us what they need in order to implement well. With solid implementation should come student results. And we saw this with our Reading Horizon study, too. We saw that we started with very low levels of implementation. Throughout the study, that implementation grew, but the student results did not follow for another couple of years. It really does take time. And so our efforts right now are really pushing into those systems at the school level that support instruction and ensuring that we have provided that job-embedded coaching, even if we can't find a fleet of RPS math-focused coaches. We're working with a partner to bring that support into the school.
Okay, and I understand that. Being a math person, and yes, I went to high school a long, long time ago, when it was a very traditional approach. But with that being said, math skills are something that you build by practicing. So solving equations, you're not going to learn that by sitting at a table with a group of kids talking about it. You have to practice it. That's what homework in a math class is about. So it just seems to me that it's not working. And it's, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the answer is. Certainly not going back to the 1980s, when I was in high school is not the answer. But it seems like there's, I don't know, we've been doing this for 15 years, and these are the results we're getting.
Yeah, I want to make sure that I clarify that the part that we're emphasizing is the instructional shift of mathematics discourse and collaborative problem solving. That's really at the heart of our study, but it's not the only part of a successful math lesson. Our middle school math resource has a structure where the teacher sort of launches the lesson with a problem and a question. Students have opportunities to really talk that through, and that's where they're building their understanding. And then they reinforce with independent practice. And so they're getting it all, all the time, where the teacher is like, let's put our minds around this problem. Let's talk about it. Let's learn how each other are thinking, and then let's go practice independently. And that's happening in our elementary classrooms, too, through things like number talks. And I would really invite you to come see some of our youngest students using number talks to really build their fluency and understanding about how math works, so that when they have those problems to practice, they're thinking about how to solve the problem and not just a rote repetition of a procedure. That's really the goal. But integration does not remove independent practice. It doesn't remove homework, and it doesn't remove individual responsibility for being able to demonstrate your success. It's just, we zoomed in on the mathematical discourse part because it's the hardest part of the shifts that have come in the standards.
Okay, so we're going to give this, what, another two years?
I think we need to monitor our coaching next year. And we have an entire three-year plan that will be done by early fall for the next three years of what curricula are up for resource adoption, what curricula are up for just improvements, because we met with teachers over the last year and a half to really audit what we have in place. So this will be one piece of an overall plan for curriculum improvement over the next three years. What we want to do is allow the time for training, the PLC improvements, and the embedded coaching to have some time to work and to get some feedback from teachers. And we're going to, we screen our students in math three times a year. So we're going to have already data from our fall screening, and then we'll screen again in December, January. And we'll be monitoring student growth, and we'll be working with those coaches from I Ready to keep us focused on the things that matter most.
So with the study being over, will we get reports back on?
I would love to give you reports back on our implementation and our student results. I agree with you, which I think is what you're saying, is math is critical. And it actually is a real skill barrier for a lot of the population when they don't understand a lot of the math that's coming at them. Even when you think about social media and how algorithms are built and how we are influenced, that is all math. And when our students don't understand fundamentally the patterns of math and how math is around us every day, we put them at a disadvantage. And so our goal here is really to increase the level of discourse, increase our students' confidence in talking about math, and then increase the way that they are showing that growth on our assessments. And I agree with all of you that current status quo is not working. It's not good enough for my kid. It's not good enough for the kids in your lives. And so that's why we're really trying to listen to what our teachers are saying, provide the supports that they've asked for, and then continue to monitor. And we all want it to happen a heck of a lot faster. I agree with you. This is, if we're really listening to our teachers, though, we have to build that faith and the belief that this thing matters. And that happens for teachers when they see rapid student results. So I think putting our focus on implementation, teacher support, principal support, and really relentlessly monitoring those coaching cycles, which are new this year, will give us guidance into whether this is truly a resource problem or we need to do something drastically different.
Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Okay, I'm glad that you said that, Mrs. Detman. You know, a second ago, excuse me, Dr. Gallagher said that it don't take all day to recognize sunshine. But so, you know, talk is cheap. So what we're going through right now with these high school students, another three years, that means it's going to be a whole cycle of students that will come through, come out of RPS with this math deficiency. You see how it's really affected us because when they're getting to the college level, and then we're wanting them to come back to here and teach, and they can't pass the math section of the licensure test. You see how it's holding us all kind of, you know, for lack of a better word, kind of hostage. And so to me, 15 years, however many years, it seemed like it's just, and I've been saying this the whole time I've been on the board, you know, we have to do something better. Having discussions is all great, but at some time, we need to, you know, put truth to power and do action, right? And I'm myself, I feel like the more we talk and the more engaged, you know, we only have one coach, or we only have one of this person. So it's like, we have all these great plans, and it's a beautiful, I'm sorry for saying beautiful. Sorry, you know the new saying. But it's a great PowerPoint, and you have all these great ideas on implementation and things and what we got. These are great plans, but if we can't, you know, execute these plans, then it's all just, you know?
Yeah. And, you know, something that we haven't done before is that I briefly mentioned a partnership that Sarah Brenner and I have just, we are the people. We are going to be monitoring this relentlessly. We are going to be pulling in those coaches every month. We're going to be talking to middle school principals every month. I have seven hours on my calendar every month to be able to be in classrooms, myself observing. And this is the time where we have to be on the ground because training is not an excuse anymore. We're there. We are at really high levels of training. And so now we need to be seeing rapid improvement in full implementation.
So again, I'm asking, you know, what is the contingency plan? If you're seeing at first quarter or second quarter, excuse me, this isn't working, you know, what is the fallback? Because again, you know?
So the fallback would be, we would need to put all our heads together, of course, and ask, why isn't it working? What are the continued barriers? If it's the resource, then the right thing to do is to find a new resource. And if it is not that, then the right thing to do is to work together to develop the solution. The easiest thing to change is the resource. It isn't generally the thing that makes the most impact.
Okay, I just wanted to make those comments, but thank you.
Yeah, I hear you loud and clear. And I really hope that in our mid-year review next year, we're able to show you that, you know, our listening and response solutions here have yielded the results that we're all looking for.
So I'm at the midpoint of my term. Going to have some good results in the next couple of years? Or, you know, this is, I'm just trying to, you know, reiterate the importance of how it trickles down. We can't find teachers.
Yes.
The teachers that come out, or the students that come out and even finish college cannot pass this test, the math portion of the test.
And we know, and we know that that really begins in fourth grade and fifth grade.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I think the plan is really going to work, you know, for those lower grades and everything and all of this. But we still have a critical part, you know, the high school. What are we going to do? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. My question is kind of referring to what Ms. McCall stated. When she mentioned, you know, about quarter in, we're doing this new program, we're implementing this. Where in the, I guess, where in this process are you going to stop and say, okay, looking at the results, like, this is not working? Where's going to be our next plan? Like, how far along? Is it after a year in? Or, you may have already stated this, and I'm sorry if I missed it.
I think a critical juncture is going to be around next January, when we have student data, and we have several months' worth of PLC work that's been happening. And we're able to really look at evidence. Are PLCs up and running in a healthy way? Are they focused on grade-level instruction and analyzing student data? Are our coaching cycles well-attended? Are teachers and schools highly engaged with our coaches that are coming from I Ready? And then are we seeing students who are growing in STAR greater than 50% student growth percentile? That's what we want to see.
One thing I just want to make clear, if changing the resource, if you're, well, first of all, let's look at, just to, just so you don't feel like your entire term has been wasted on this math topic, Ms. McCall. If you remember last year, we were about 25% of the teachers who had even had the training. So it was very difficult for us to make any kind of an evaluation of whether this was going to work or not, if people haven't even been to the training. So we've made significant progress as we've made this a priority to make a good evaluation. What I want to point out the risk here, and it's not that we're being stubborn and trying to prove we were right with this decision. Couple of things I want to remind everyone. First and foremost, the scores were as bad or worse when we used a traditional sequence with a different situation. So we did try something different, but it isn't like we broke something that was working. We had massive failure rates with algebra. We've tried it as a two-year algebra program with kids who are struggling. And algebra was a gatekeeper course that led to students being tracked to non-college-bearing curriculum. And it was a really, really bad practice. So we were attempting, so the history of this work in our country, in our state, and in our district, all parallel that this is a problem. This is not a Rockford unique situation. Two, you can't evaluate any curriculum properly if you aren't doing the curriculum. And that has been a frustrating journey for all of us. For two years, the board has had to listen to us, struggle and fight and try different ways to get to 100% of our teachers doing that. And you have every right to be frustrated about that. That's made this evaluation of the curriculum slower than it should be. But I think you can see that we have at least moved that this year. Comparing to where we were sitting last year to this year, we do know that all of our teachers have been trained. We do see improvement on implementation, but it isn't where it needs to be. The third issue that we just have to confront here is there is a risk that we would literally set ourselves back two or three years if we change a resource, start all of the teachers that we've just spent three or four years training, and now start over in a new resource, that we would actually set ourselves even further behind. So it is not, what I want to just be clear about, just the human part of this, it is not out of being stubborn or, oh, man, we've got to prove we're right on this one. It's the opposite. It's, we are, we have put, it takes so much time to train, you know, 100 math teachers to do something with fidelity. We really don't want to run the risk of almost getting there We really don't want to run the risk of almost getting there and then starting over and having three more years before we can say there are results. That may end up unfortunately be where we land, but we want to make sure we have exhausted full implementation before we make that choice. So it is not a lack of urgency. It is not that we are tone deaf to your frustrations because we share them. It is, the real reality here is we do need to get through January to see if we're seeing those results. There have been two major examples of this in our district, and Ms. Detman mentioned them. The first one was if we would have pulled away from one of our core literacy resources for K through three, which was doing a really good job of balancing phonemic instruction and really strengthening our reading program. If we would have moved away from a program called Reading Horizons, when everyone was telling us to move away from Reading Horizons, but we weren't implementing it, we would not have seen seven, eight-point gains in elementary literacy like we did. That mattered, and that was a teach, the teachers were reluctant to do it, got on board, and then, boy, every year you've seen our literacy scores go up. Conversely, we had a program called Integrated Literacy that we kept trying and trying and trying to get right, and we got away from it. And then we implemented CKLA, and I believe CKLA implementation has helped contribute to those literacy increases in third through eighth grade. So both outcomes are a possibility. It's really possible, we could do another year of this and go, yep, we got to get a new textbook. We got to, not a textbook, but a new curricular resource. It's also possible that it'll be like the first scenario. But what we don't want to do is, from a place of fear, pull away just before it could start working. And that's what we're trying to time out here. So we hear your frustration, I hear your frustration, and that's what we're trying to do here, is make sure we really have fully evaluated this before we jump back to say, okay, guys, now it's going to take us two, three years to get everybody really good at this one. Because there is a huge learning curve. Even though these are certified math teachers, learning to teach math in the way that it is expected to be done in a way that close to 100% of our students can be successful is a huge, huge lift for everybody across the country. And we're doing this in an environment that I just want to add, and this is not an excuse, but if you look at state math trends and national math trends, everybody is struggling. The pandemic hit students hardest in mathematics, even more than literacy. So those are just some of the things we're juggling and trying to balance here. So one of the reasons we continue to bring this forward to you is because we believe the transparency of studying this program and not sweeping it under the rug is the key here. We think the board deserves to know about these struggles. We're going to keep bringing it forward to you even when it's not an AROI study. And we are committed to fixing this problem, whether it is with making this work or whether it's with a new program of making it work. But there are no easy, quick fixes, and I just want to be clear about that. And I know you know that, but I just, I just feel like at some point, I'm watching all of you react to this, and at some point, it has to feel like, are they just being stubborn? And I just want to tell you, it is truly out of a commitment to not want to make a problem even worse, which is a real risk here.
Oh, Ms. Pearson?
Thank you. So I do not believe that you're being stubborn. But I do believe that we, that there is a gap. And we are, we're missing something. And my mind goes back to the training that we received when Mr. Nick was here. Yeah, Hacalor, something like that. And I can't get away from the fact that we are not dealing with the symptoms, which is a lot of work. I understand that having to deal with symptoms is a lot of work. But I really believe that that is where the gap is. And you have individuals passing, but it's still not ready. I understand that, for an example, to get into the trades apprenticeship is kind of basic math with some algebra, from what I understand. And if our students can't pass that, we have a bigger problem other than just training and conversation. And because it's, it was implementation, and then we're going to get better in implementation, we still may see a problem because we're not dealing with the symptoms. And we listen to research, we look at data, we look at studies, but we really have not identified how our students learn. And until we move past the data, we learned, we had conversations about that as well, and really understand how our students learn and deal with the gap. Because you can't keep, even if you, even if teachers implement it, it doesn't mean that the students are going to get it. So there is, there's still a gap, and we really have to deal with those symptoms. So while we are, you know, having the additional training, we have community and parent liaisons, and we have a whole department. I think that we need to take a different approach to how we're going to help our students learn. Because yes, the teachers need to implement it, but the students still need to learn. And I think that when we really look at all of the components, we may have a little more success. Otherwise, we stand a chance of being in the same place three years from now. And so someone is making, or individuals are making a decision that is, that may not be including other feedback or using, there's a gap. And I think that we should take a closer look at what that gap is and are we willing to put in the work to deal with the symptoms and how we're going to do that?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And Dr. Reed embedded a pretty deep discussion about math instruction and what our students want in their math instruction, when they feel confident and when they feel proud of themselves as students. And what our students resoundingly said is the kind of math environments that we're trying to get at through promoting more discourse. And so I think, you know, our students have told us that, that's what they really want, and that's what they need in order to be successful. So this sort of all-in approach is not just us thinking like, okay, the research says that this is the instruction. We also asked our middle school and high school students, and we brought that feedback forward to our teachers for their reaction, too. And now is the time to just provide that regular, consistent coaching and being in classrooms and encouraging teacher teams to change their practice together because they're seeing the impact in student results. And I'm certain that Dr. Reed will listen to students again next year. And I hope that math will be a part of that conversation again so that we can hear from them again and use their feedback to drive our next moves.
I would just add, that actually is a good segue into the bookend portion that Ms. Miller will be talking about in terms of closing out this AROI, what should be our options for studying, where are the gaps that you all may wish for us to study in our next AROI?
I'll take that as my cue. So you have in front of you as well just an extra additional resource for you to start thinking about what would be our next Tier Three AROI. We select two every cycle. So these are our five. So I'm going to do a quick little options, just a review of what those five are. And remember that an AROI's purpose is we're looking at what works for whom and under what conditions. And I just want to commend the board as well of this was a very engaging conversation and lots of questions. And the curiosity and the flashlight focus that this provided on math is the purpose of doing these. So as we look for where we're going with what you guys choose for your next two, keep that in mind of what do you want to hear from the AROI study? What do you want to hear three times a year for one to three years? Our AROIs can just be one year, but they can be up to three years as well, depending on what the selection ends up being. So our first choice is Safe and Civil School and our CHAMP's partnership. Our next one is looking at our new teacher orientation and mentoring model, our student well-being program models for social-emotional, and our special education intensive school response plan, our bilingual program improvements with our K through five one-way dual-language and part-time TBE models. Just a reminder, you won't be selecting tonight. This is just to start the conversation, that these are the five that you will be selecting from. I want to be just considerate of your time, and I know that I took a lot of airtime tonight. So you've got a beginning packet to start looking at what do these words mean, because there's a lot of school jargon in those titles. Just you can start to think about that. But I look forward to the August committee of the whole. We'll have more further discussion where you guys will select which two. But I wanted to have, you guys have an opportunity to have time to really think about, which two of these five do you really want to hear intensely about three times a year?
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Miller regarding what the options are or? And you can also email any questions as well for follow-up. No? Okay. Okay, thank you. Our last item of business is to review the consent agenda. And given we are about 25 minutes over our time at this portion, does anybody have any specific questions about any of our consent items? I can also briefly go over them in the buckets as I discussed if people would like.
If you want to go over, maybe you will cover the question.
Okay.
I only had like two or three.
Okay, no problem. Okay, if I get to your letter, just let me know. I'm going to make sure I can see you make like a motion towards me. Okay, so agenda items J and S are regarding mental health support. Whitehead would like to continue their partnership with KP Counseling. And District Administration would like to continue the partnership with Rosecrans to increase the number of behavioral health student assistance professionals and support for substance use and prevention. Does anybody have any questions on agenda items J and S? Okay, I do, really quickly. For agenda item S regarding the BHsAPs, two quick questions. On the contract, it says that intervention plans for Rosecrans will be monitored regarding, monitored through Panorama. And on Exhibit B, it has, one moment. Okay, on Exhibit B, it says collaboratively, the district and Rosecrans professionals will work to supply district-level maintenance of intervention through Panorama. So Rosecrans will store their data in Avatar, which I'm assuming is their electronic health record. And then collaboratively, it says it will include creating and maintaining intervention plans in Panorama, updating the plans, checking progress, denying services. Can somebody explain to me how that would work to say collaboratively? Like, does a Rosecrans professional have a login in Panorama? Or do we share data, or how does that work?
Our Rosecrans BHsAPs have logins to Panorama and are actively in there. And then they are a part of our MTSS teams when they're discussing students.
Okay, so do they have access to students that are on their caseloads? Or they have access to all grade-level students, building level, how does that work?
They only have access to the students that they work with. Amy, do you, am I, do we need to clarify anything beyond that? No, okay.
Okay, and then my last question is the BHsAPs for their role. So in our Code of Conduct, new Code of Conduct approved for the 25-26 school year, intervention regarding students who are, have a substance use concern that they bring to our attention or one that is brought to our attention through the Code of Conduct. It's my understanding these individuals will work with those students as an intervention. So are these professionals, do they have their CACD Certified Alcohol and Drug Counselor license?
I'm going to make eye contact with Amy Ganim, and I say, yes, they do.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have questions regarding J and S? No, okay. Next are agenda items G, H, and K. These are regarding community partnerships and school contracts. These are, this bundle or bucket focuses on aligning additional supports to create positive, engaging, and supportive environments for students. Ellis Elementary will partner with the Rockford Park District during lunch and recess time. McIntosh Elementary will partner with the Park District to hire seven mentors to support students throughout the school day and on bus rides home. Both Ellis and McIntosh are intensive schools. Sommerdale, Jefferson, and Resa will partner with Regional Office of Education for various topics regarding, related to equity and climate and culture. Antoine Harris will continue work in three schools, Auburn, West, and Jefferson. Resa, Lathrop, Lewis, Lemon, Welsh, and Ellis will partner with YSN to provide trauma therapists, to provide trauma therapy and crisis response intervention to children and staff and parent education training. Does anybody have any questions on agenda items G, H, and K? All right, we got four more buckets, we're moving along here. Okay, contracts for professional services are regarding agenda items L, M, N, and T. Nutrition Services will renew their contract with Link, which is a software that supports the daily operations of the entire department. Athletics will renew their contract with Agile Sports Technologies, HUDL, to support coaching, athletes, recruitment, and more. Curriculum Department will continue annual training for integrated math teachers with CPM. Curriculum Department will renew the contract with Renaissance to provide STAR assessment suite to all students grades K through 11. Does anybody have questions regarding L, M, N, and T? Ms. Pearson?
Thank you, Vice President Bennett. I, not necessarily, well, yeah, I do have a question. So the summer professional learning, that is not mandatory, correct?
It is required for new teachers. It's an opportunity for any existing teachers who may be taking on a new course or content.
Okay, so it is only mandatory for the new teachers?
Correct.
Okay, and what is the average attendance for the summer professional learning?
It varies wildly by level and by content. And we're delivering it in a mode that's a little bit different this year, so difficult to say. In our Essential Learning Institutes, when we extended the school year by four days, we had a really high number of elementary teachers attend. I believe we were around 60%. That number was less by the time we got to high school.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, lastly, do we offer any incentives for those that are not mandatory?
We pay, we offer pay.
Okay, so you, okay.
At a per diem rate.
Okay, thank you.
You call Q.
Okay, next we have agenda items Q and R regarding grants. The Early Childhood Department requests the board accepts a $5,000 grant to support strong readers, stronger bonds, dads and caregivers in early literacy projects. And the district's annual consolidated district plan is up for approval and to be resubmitted to the state. Does anybody have questions regarding agenda items Q and R? Ms. Pearson?
Yes, I just need clarity. So this is for early childhood, I understand.
For letter Q?
Correct.
Yes.
And is it for all early childhood locations?
Kim, I'll try to give an overview, and if I miss anything, please fill in any gaps. This is to support our family support and home visiting program. And we have a group of dads who have been organizing over the last couple of years and creating engagement activities for children and their fathers. So this is specifically a grant to support that and to fund the program this year. Anything you'd add, Kim?
It's really about supporting our family engagement work that we do within our program. And actually, we went and sought out money because of level funding for EC. So this is just going to keep enhancing it. But the key to this one is we've had a Dad's First Tuesday Group working this year, supporting them and learning how to support kids. And they were all in on this and helped us come up with the activities and ideas that they wanted to support literacy for their young children. It's available to any family, birth to five, in our program, any dad that wants to join. But we have these Dad Play Days twice a year, and then the first Tuesdays for dads.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Actually, I think it is absolutely awesome. Of course, early childhood is where it all began, but just that engagement alone, I think it is a good foundational start. Thank you.
Yeah, we have Dad Co. leads, so it's really cool.
I have, before you go, sorry, I have a quick question. Okay, so regarding the grant, on page two, there's a whole section about the board agrees to in the contract. With a lot of stuff in here, but one of which says, allow scheduled site visits for United Way Rockford Valley to fully understand what work is being accomplished, how the work might correspond with other partners, sharing the work with other partners to increase synergies. And it has specific timeframes. So who is allowing who to visit and what are they visiting?
So as soon as the grant is accepted, we'll be meeting with United Way, and it would be the early childhood. So they may come and observe a Dad's Play Day or observe our First Tuesday for Dads. They're actually coming to watch the program and implementation, to see what we're doing as part of their reporting back on the funding. So I think, I think that all says the board will allow because the board is accepting it. But the Early Childhood Department will be working with United Way for them to come basically monitor the use of our money.
Okay, and so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so and whoever they're visiting, for example, would consent or sign something to allow them to come to their home or whatever that is?
Yeah, and actually, it won't be coming to the home. So they're, if you look in there, we're doing two Dad Play Days. We always do one in the fall, one in the spring. You're always welcome to come. They're fun. And then we have the First Tuesdays for Dads. And those are already scheduled, and so they would be coming to one of those events. They won't be going into the home. They'll be coming to an event where we are running these activities. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
One, real quick question. Can you send a notification when these are actually going to take place? Just as a friendly reminder, invite?
Yeah, no problem. We love having people come.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question too.
Ms. McCall.
Thank you. How has those events, you said we always do it, how has it been attended?
So our First Tuesdays for Dads, we've had over the past two years, it's grown to about 20 dads that come on a regular basis. And like I said, we've had a, we've had a male family support person co-leading with a dad. Unfortunately, he is going to be entering into a grad program. So it won't be, you know, male and a male, but we'll do our best. So they come about, about 20 dads every First Tuesday, they come. Our Dad's Play Days are the big event. So we have anywhere between 200 to 300 participants come on our, they're Saturdays. They're Saturday mornings. We do one in the fall, one in the, one in the spring. And we always embed learning activities related to the early learning standards, birth through five. And the dads come and have a great time. We've got some great photos, activities. They are highly engaged. And we've always done a little bit of reading, but this time, we're just going to have a stronger literacy focus. On the First Tuesdays for Dads, we're actually going to be training them on literacy strategies to do while they read to their young children. So again, we'll just continue to advertise it. I mean, as many dads can come, can come. It's open. This is just going to help fund the books and the food. You know, dads eat a lot. They were kind of eating me out of house and home this year with my grant money. So they like having breakfast. So that's what this will help fund.
So could you share, like, what tools do you use to get that many parents to an event? What is your advertising? Just put it out there so it can be replicated.
Yeah, so we do flyers. We push it out on Thrill Share. Our dads are, you know, dads just like to play. And I think advertising it as a Dad's Play Day. This year, we've had several moms come because they didn't want to be left out. Of course, we let them come. But they'll, they'll be grandpas, dads, uncles. But really, our advertisement is through Thrill Share, through, it's just a flyer, and then family support staff, you know, reaching out and contacting families. And really, word of mouth, too. Like, we might have our Midway Village event where it's a Scarecrow Fest for family engagement. We have probably over 400 families that attend that. Every time we have an event, we advertise the next coming family engagement activities because we provide a lot of family education as well. This just happens to be a way for us to use United Way's literacy partnership to fund some of our events.
Whatever you're doing, keep up the good work.
Huh?
Whatever you're doing, keep up the good work.
Oh, yeah, we're excited. I mean, actually, these dads really did a great job. We've had dad readers and things like that at those Dad Days. This year, our fall was like superheroes. They all came dressed like superheroes. It was pretty good, pretty fun. So I'll make sure we send those out, but we do do a theme. But having dads help plan it really helps.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? No? Okay. Okay, agenda items O and P are regarding early childhood collaborations. Circle of Learning Agreement and the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Rockford Head Start allow our existing collaborations to continue with each entity. Any questions on agenda items O and P?
Just a quick question. We're on the same schedule in terms of dates.
For Head Start.
For Head Start, right?
I think we're still off on a couple of federal holidays. But we have worked with Head Start to have plans in place.
So what we've done is on the days that Head Start is off because of the federal holidays, we've moved our non-program days, which is a non-student attendance day. It's a professional learning day for our teachers. We've moved it there so that we aren't missing any staff or students on those days. That was the best we could do for an agreement because they are still going to stay closed on those days. But that way, all Head Start staff and all Head Start students are available to attend every attendance day. So that was just two dates.
Awesome, thanks.
Anything else before I go?
No, not unless you have anything to do with charter schools, which I don't believe you do. Okay, last agenda item is I for charter schools. School Works Agreement will kick off the next renewal cycle for all three charter schools. Does anybody have any questions on letter I or any of the agenda items we've reviewed so far? Not right now. Okay, if you do, email in advance and somebody can assist. Okay, thank you so much. That concludes our report. Thank you for the additional time.
Thank you. Next, either Ms. Pearson or Ms. McCall will lead the planning and development. So you, Ms. Pearson, this one month.
Okay, thank you, President Carpenter. Actually, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Lawrence, Chief of Student Services, followed by Ms. Detman and Chief, Chief and Academic Officer, and Dr. Gallagher, Chief of Schools, to give their budget request presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move through this swiftly but thoroughly because you've been sitting here a very long time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. Student Services is comprised of these individuals. We have a brand-new ED of Special Education that started this week. Happy to have her. And we have four new administrators that have moved within the district to join our special education team. This is what Student Services does every day. We do all of the alternative learning placements, health services. We monitor Section 504 compliance, special education, and student discipline. I'm going to start with the Student Services side of the house. As you can see, there are two big highlights here. Two large decisions that we made were to stop the contract with YSN and pull those positions in-house. And then those positions will move to, under Maureen Kirschman. Those are for truancy and attendance. And so those will move under Dr. Reed's supervision. And the other was to take on SOAR Academy ourselves. So we will not be partnering with the Regional Office moving into next school year. And we will be owning the SOAR program ourselves and monitoring that progress with our own teachers. You can see the detail of our contracts here. Again, Youth Services Network is up there. That was a large contract. Subject.com is our digital curriculum that we use in our Refocus, Reset, Restore classrooms in each of our middle schools and our high schools. And we've added some license to Roosevelt to support student credit attainment and recovery at Roosevelt. Regional Office of Education is our Summit Academy tuition. And then you can see the large number there, the $1.4 million reduction for the Regional Office for SOAR Academy. This is our grant funded, our Grant Fund and Student Services, which is our JDC Juvenile Detention Center. You can also see that we did fund the Youth Services Transition Advocate out of the grant. We've moved that out of the grant and into RPS position. We've increased our license to support credit recovery and attainment at JDC. We're also using that residual balance there between that 62 and 23. We're looking to add, as you know, we added PE back. The kids are going outside at our Juvenile Detention Center. And we're also looking to add in some farming. So some equipment for our students to grow plants and vegetables. Moving to the Special Ed side of the house, just some normal increases in salaries there. One of the large items that we'll talk about here is the Other Miscellaneous, which is our Special Education Therapeutic Day placements. And I'll get into that in just a minute. The detail of our contracts here, we have Ramp, which is, you've heard about some of those programs that we use for outside programs that we use to support our students with jobs in our community. And I do want to focus here on the therapeutic day. We have about 320 students that attend therapeutic day sites. We have 25 sites that we currently contract with. And those rates vary between $138 a day, up to $750 a day, and up to $900 a day for residential. We currently have one student in residential. Residential placements are 100% reimbursed back to the district the following school year. And the rest of those tuition are about 50% reimbursed to the district. So that looks, it's, you know, a very large number. We get about half of that back. The next section here, I just want to kind of call out the Renaissance Learning. We've added additional dollars to Renaissance Learning. Oops, I'm on the wrong page. Yep. We've, we are continuing to fund our Renaissance Learning for our autism teachers. So we've been providing professional learning to them and then a curriculum for them to use with our autism students. And that's an ever-growing population that we have in our district. And then I do also want to say the Northern Illinois Association, that's our contract that we, that we lovingly refer to them as NIA. They do a lot of our specialized related services, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech and language. And they also provide deaf and hard of hearing support and vision and orientation and mobility. And so most of that cost is an increase in their cost. And we added four additional occupational therapists, bless you, to meet the needs of our students. Moving on, not much to talk about here. News to you when up, we added a behavioral component to that curriculum, and that is in our intellectually disabled classrooms and our STAR Autism classrooms. And then the Park District, that was a contract that we used for extended school year. And we decided this year to use our own PE and art teachers because of the shortened summer programming. Every way you might remember that is Snap and Read. There's some upgrades to their software, and that's a shared contract between curriculum and Ed Services, the curriculum team, and special education. And then the Institute for Multisensory Education is just a renewed commitment to our explicit literacy instruction for students with disabilities. And of course, you know, our, our jobs up in Student Services is really to support students at the individual level, which is difficult because there's a lot of students. And really work with the schools to provide some of those additional resources that they might need to support students at their buildings. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Ms. Vice President Bennett.
I have two questions regarding SOAR. I guess it's a two-part question. Do you have any additional context regarding why we're taking SOAR on in-house in addition to what will happen to the teachers that were not employed by RPS 205 and now we will have our own teachers?
So the teachers that worked at SOAR Academy were employed by the Regional Office of Education and have been absorbed back into their programming for Summit Academy and other miscellaneous places. And really, the primary reason is there's state statute that really does not allow them to support a public entity using ALOP. And that, there's just statute around it that we just could not get around. I really commend the Regional Office. We collaborated with them. They pushed very hard for two years to try to get that. And we're just not seeing that as a viable option. And instead of jeopardizing their funding as a regional office, we decided to take it on ourselves.
Okay, so the, so we would, going into next school year, hire staff and whatnot. So would there be any training or overlap from? Because my understanding that it was going really, really well with staff that were there. So would there be any training from ROE staff to RPS staff in the transition time period?
We would not be coordinating with the Regional Office for all of the training. For some of it, we would be. In addition to us moving away from them, we were at six classrooms and we're moving to three. So there's a pretty significant decrease. And that was due to the number of students that we worked with this school year. We had about 65 students that were referred. We had 30 students who entered. And I do want to give a shout out to Amy Gannon's team because they worked really hard with, with my team to mitigate those 35 students that didn't need to go. So the schools identified them, MTSS and Student Services swooped in and built and created plans for the students, and they were able to remain in their buildings. And so that's kind of where we're looking for most of the professional development, is to move into, back into that school setting. Oops, I'm sorry, in terms of supporting them before they get to SOAR. And Dr. Turner has some plans for some other professional development, sort of practice in circles. We're looking at partnering with Lockwood to do some equestrian work with the students and some animal therapy on a regular basis for students that, as you know, SOAR does levels. As students move up, up the levels, they will be able to go to Lockwood and have that access to that.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that. And especially that we're using all of the different tiers, right? We don't want to recommend higher up the tier should that not be needed. It's more expensive, least restrictive kind of setting, so that's great. My last question is regarding the Park District and ESY. So I heard you say that given the smaller summer, that's why we decided to do it in-house. So moving forward for next school year, would we continue to do it in-house? Or would the plan be to continue the partnership?
I think we'll assess where we're at for next school. With the new Executive Director of Special Education, it'll be her decision. But I think we'll assess how that went this school year and just determine if that's, you know, if there's that added value for adding Park District. Are there any other activities that they would provide that we don't?
Okay.
You know, so it might just be a combination of our, our teachers and PE teachers, but then a contract with, with the Park District to do something different.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Stanford?
The $2 million increase for the therapeutic day schools, what, what does that involve? Do you anticipate more students being, needing it? Or the cost of the facilities is going up?
So I will say we've been, we have budgeted inappropriately in the past. It was at about $6.7 million when I started down here in 2017. And we were hovering at about $7.3 million at that point. And we had never adjusted the budget request to meet the need. And so this is a true reflection of the number of students that we anticipate going to therapeutic day. And a reminder is, the state does monitor us in our percentage of students that we have in each educational environment. And we are not over in therapeutic day. We are in a very good space for therapeutic day.
So we were over budget last year?
We were, we, we under budgeted. We under budgeted.
But we were over budget spending last?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just have a quick question. What is the total number of teachers that we'll be needing for SOAR?
SOAR Academy will have three teachers, a licensed social worker, and three behavior intervention specialists, and an administrator, full-time administrator.
And there's no pairs?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, there's pair professionals in each of the classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. They're very important. I didn't mean to miss them.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to go relatively quickly here. I'm representing the Education Services Division. And that is made up of all of these lovely departments here. We have bilingual and multicultural education. I have my fantastic assistant, Cindy Marsh. We have college and career readiness, curriculum, early childhood, and MTSS. In FY26 Improvement and Innovation, we'll be moving over to our Finance Department as it is primarily grants-related. This last year, we rolled out several new initiatives. We rolled out the Conscious Discipline Program as a supplemental social-emotional curriculum in our early childhood centers. We rolled out Wayfinder as a Tier One social-emotional curriculum in grades K through 12, pardon me. We, of course, maintain access for all schools to Tier One resources. We expanded We expanded dual credit and work-based learning opportunities. And then, as always, we provide high-quality summer programming for more than 2,000 students that kicks off this week. Budget summary, overall, you can look at total without grants. We're up just slightly with about $51,000. And without... Or with grants, pardon me, we are down by 1.6 million. And I'll walk you through that by department. We're going to start with our bilingual department. Here, you get an overview of some of their most important contracts. You can see that we've zeroed out Benchmark. That will be replaced by Amplify, which has a significant increase. This is a focus on building foundational literacy for our primarily Spanish-speaking students in both Spanish and English. We decided to walk away from our contract with NearPod and put those dollars elsewhere across multiple departments. And so the overall bottom line here with that increase to support foundational literacy is we're up by $210,000 here. In their Fund 18 or grants budget, they're up significantly, $200,000. That is primarily due to Elevation, which is a platform that is going to help us monitor the educational outcomes of our EL students in particular, and also help us organize all of their paperwork. And it will replace manual processes that we've used in the past. And then additionally, we've adopted Summit K-12, which is a program to support ESL in our elementary schools. And I'm going to pause on this for one second because there's a feature about this program, which I think is so amazing. And it's that for every license that we have assigned to a student, the family gets four. So parents can learn English alongside their students in their home. And I think that is fantastic. So they are up $220,000 in grants. College and career readiness, overall, you know, we support our partnerships with Rock Valley College. We also have platforms to monitor work-based learning and job shadow experiences, et cetera. Zello is new. We have a reduction away from group trails. Zello replaces that. And overall, the bottom line is they are down in spending by about $68,000. Career running start, we have reported on in the past. We had a lack of student interest. We had more seats open than we had filled. And so we've decided to move in another direction. Curriculum department, this is where all of our sort of core resources live. And you can see that we are, you know, maintaining overall. But we did add No Red Ink as a tool for our 6th through 12 literacy support. We also added some licensing to support K-5 music. We eliminated Gale Group. We found that it was duplicative, and it also had low usage. And so we walked away from that contract as well. We have some minor reductions also in a product called Learning Ally. That's not something that we're renewing, and that's based on usage and feedback from our schools. We do anticipate field testing, a 6-8 ELA curriculum. So we've put some funding there to support a field test this upcoming year. Sorry, yes, and there's another reduction for NearPod. These stayed the same. And then overall, when you look at the entirety of the budget, we're down by about $165,000. In early childhood, it's been a level-funded grant for a really long time. And so we see that we are always going to end up with sort of a clean bottom line. You'll see some reduction in transportation that, again, has to do with being in a level-funded grant situation and not having as much sort of extra outside of salary and benefits to devote to transportation. Overall, that is down by $257,000. In improvement and innovation, which, again, will move under finance in the coming fiscal year, they're down in total by about $23,000 here for Fund 18. And that is due to just a reduction in extended-day 21st Century CCLC programming, which is coming to a close. And then in the Charter Authorizing Unit, it is up by $40,000 because, as we've mentioned twice this evening, we are beginning a new renewal cycle. And school works as our partner for that. The result of this contract you'll be seeing in February when you hear the reports on the charters and we give the renewal reports. MTSS, overall, we do have an increase a little bit in panorama, but that's actually because it was previously grant-funded, and those grant dollars have now gone away. So we've absorbed them all into local funding. We do have a slight reduction in literacy intervention licensing, but that's just because we are trying to be incredibly accurate with our licensing and seats. And we have... It looks like we're down $200,000 in Rose Grants. But if you look on the next slide, that funding has been moved and increased into grants, and it's $450,000. So the bottom line for local money for MTSS is up a total of $367,000. I will say that prior to this last fiscal year, there was no location for MTSS. So we've been sort of developing that and ensuring that all of that is accurately reported through Ms. Gannon's budget. In terms of grant dollars for MTSS, down by about $117,000. The biggest investment there is in those mental health professionals and our partnership with Rose Grants. And then also, in partnership with our Special Education Department, providing Orton-Gillingham training for structured literacy and explicit phonics instruction. And then we do have on the agenda tonight, 612 intervention resources and, of course, our Wayfinder SEL curriculum, which has been built into Fund 10. Overall, for your investment, you get dynamic coordinated services to schools. We align the educational infrastructure to serve all students. And it, of course, advance equitable access to high-quality programs and opportunities. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions? I just have a really quick question. On the return on investment, align educational infrastructure to serve all students and advance equitable access to high-quality programs and opportunities. What exactly does that look like?
Well, it looks like, you know, triple-digit increases in dual-credit participation in our high schools through our college and career academies. It looks like providing access to high-quality foundational literacy programming for Spanish speakers in our district. It looks like providing early childhood opportunities for our students who need it the most. So it's all sort of encapsulated in the kinds of programming and opportunities that we offer our students through these departments.
The special program, say, at West or Haskell, what does equity look like there?
So special programs are not captured in this budget currently.
Okay.
All of that comes through our next presentation, which is under Dr. Gallagher.
I had it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
For our schools team, you can see with the organizational structure here, one thing that was new this year, when we had Earl Dotson Jr. retire, I absorbed into the schools team the Welcome Center and registration. So a highlight of that over this past year, since having the Welcome Center and registration together, we've been making a push to have exclusively online registration take place instead of it being a hybrid model. To date, where we're at today, we have 70% of students that are already registered online. And that's a little less than double where we were at this time last year. For the student-based budget, again, this isn't the full school budget. This is not the base package budget. This is the $28 million in site-based budgeting that we distribute to the schools that includes what we provide on a per-pupil basis with local dollars as well as grant dollars. Here, when you look at the variance and you see the total for the schools is up just about $12 million, what you're seeing there is the predicted increase in REA compensation for next year as well as increase in CCEC staffing and purchases there. There were also increases for early childhood in order to buy more supplies. Here's a breakdown of where those discretionary dollars are coming from. And I know all of you have already seen these sample one-pagers whenever you've been out to schools in your sub-districts or otherwise for the visits. So here we have Constance Lane feeding into Lincoln, feeding into East. Looking specifically at the schools team and the budgets under the schools team, really, our highlights are the same as they've been the last couple of years in terms of the professional learning and principal development that we've had in place. Here's a breakdown in what that looks like. We'll have a cost savings of close to $12,000 next year. Here's details of our contracts. You'll notice that we've significantly gone down in the Illinois Principals Association. That's because we're looking to provide some in-house mentorship that's specific to our RPS priorities for our incoming new principals. And I will say Safe and Civil Schools as well, like this is a moving target. I just found out yesterday that the Stronger Connections Grant that we have, that's about a half a million dollars, that allowed us to scale up our work with Safe and Civil Schools and Champs, that is being continued for next year. So we're going to be able to really have pretty significant cost savings there on that line. With regards to special programs, highlights remain the same. Here's what this looks like. You'll see that there's a pretty significant increase for the special programs budget. And Greg could probably explain this better. But basically, in sum, what we had tried to do over the last couple of years is take the money that we had in the special programs budget and put that back into the schools, into their budgets. But what we realized when we did that is it messed up the proportion of Title I funding that we had across all of our schools to where we are out of compliance with Title I. So we did have to pull some of that money back centrally for how we support some of our special programs so that we're not messing with that ratio of how the Title I gets distributed across the schools. But the money is being spent for the same purposes, which is really whatever is the specific professional learning or curriculum attached to each of the special programs. With regards to the Welcome Center, here are highlights, again, really focused in on our online registration process. And as a result of that process, you can see with purchased services and supplies, we'll have some cost savings there because we won't be spending any of the money for the printing of all the paper packets or the postage for mailing those out by going online. And here are the licenses for the Welcome Center. And so with that, I'll answer any questions.
Ms. Haley?
For the Safe and Civil School, the Champs, that classroom management curriculum, is that used just in our intensive schools? Or is it...
No, it's expanded beyond just our intensive schools. All of our intensive schools are scheduled for the rollout of how we're building that up. So like Riverdale, as an example, will be... This next year will be their first year in scaling up with them. In addition, we're doing across-the-board middle school is going to be doing Safe and Civil Schools. All of our high schools are doing two different programs with Safe and Civil Schools. There's a Start on Time one for clearing out hallways and having bell-to-bell instruction. And then there's also what's called Discipline in the Secondary Classroom, which is Champs for high school. Again, not about punitive focus, but how do we set positively what our expectations are for students?
Okay, good. So I see that the Rockford University Urban Ed Principal Program, that's not being funded any longer?
It's not. We don't have the demand with the pool of eligible candidates to run that on an annual basis. So it's more likely that we'll be running that on an every-other-year basis.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you all.
The man of the hour.
Okay, so it was just two weeks ago, actually, that we talked about this. So I'm going to try and keep it brief and really just hit the highlights on what's different from two weeks ago. So in the board packet, there was a really good Facility Master Plan Funding Option Update. I bolded only the things that changed so you didn't have to read everything all over again. The highlights of those changes before I walk through this is we had a couple of questions regarding usage of the 1% sales tax. I know there was a question about whether we could actually fund our own staff costs versus just contracted staff using the 1%. And the answer to that is yes, we can. So that was one. Another question we had was can we sell bonds under a traditional referendum without causing the bond and the interest rate to go up beyond what it is right now? The answer to that question is yes. But we'll see on here when I walk you through these slides, we really have a long tail on the payoff on those bonds if we would just go with the traditional referendum versus, you know, trying to pursue the 1% sales tax. So let me just walk you through what this funding plan looks like because this assumes that we would either do, you know, working cash bonds along the way with some kind of a, you know, referendum at some point, or whether we would just do a traditional referendum to raise all the information. These first couple of slides are really just looking at what our current debt structure is. And I'll go through those fairly quickly. This is what our schedule currently looks like as far as payoff of the bonds that we have on the books right now. So you can see that, right now, we're projected to pay off our existing debt in about 10 years, plus or minus. And that will pay off all the ones that were issued for the last Facility Master Plan as well as paying off the Health, Life, Safety Bonds that we just issued here this past year. So the assumptions on this financing plan, as we talked about, you know, there's a possibility we could issue all working cash bonds and not have to go to referendum. The scenario on that one actually runs even a little bit longer than this one, and we didn't have time to get that one done. So I'll have that one ready, and we'll just send it out in like a board update. But I think we can possibly do just working cash bonds and Health, Life, Safety Bonds. That would mean we don't have to go to a referendum. So that's something we really will have to watch. I think it's going to push this payback schedule maybe even out another five or six years beyond that if we did something like that. So that's probably not something that I would recommend we do. The scenario as we go here shows what the differences are on the EAV growth and whatnot. You can see this is a projected borrowing schedule. Sometime this year, whether we would do it either this fall or in the spring, would be to issue approximately $30 million worth of bonds. We'd also have to do a little bit of a refunding on an existing bond schedule to make sure that we wouldn't exceed that bond and interest rate that we have out there right now. And then we take down approximately $40 million a year in additional borrowing. In 2029, we'd also have to restructure another series of, you know, the 2015 bonds to be able to hold the interest rate at the 48.8 cents that we have right now. So it's possible to do. So this is actually how long it would take to pay those bonds back if we kept the rate at a steady 48 cents. So it's a pretty long schedule to actually get those bonds paid back if we were going to hold it at that steady rate. But again, the analysis here was just to let you guys know that we could do it. And so not going to spend a lot of time on this. You can take some time and go through it, you know, if you'd like in more detail. The answer to the question is, yes, we can do it. So that's really what you need to know on that piece right there. So really, what we'd like to talk more about right now is, you know, should we pursue the 1% sales tax? And that is actually our recommendation, is that we would pursue the sales tax referendum, which is option two on this schedule on the March 26 ballot. But we would not do so unless we had a commitment from districts that are representing 80% of the students in Winnebago County. And so that would be incumbent... of the students in Winnebago County. And so, that would be incumbent on us to go out and see whether we could get support from the other school districts in Winnebago County by September. So, we would still have plenty of time to get the question on the ballot and do an information campaign. And if we couldn't, then we think the backdrop to that one would be to pursue a traditional building referendum, because we think we'd probably get more favorable rates on doing a traditional building referendum than just issuing working cash bonds, knowing that if the referendum failed for either one, anytime that we would run it, we can still probably issue working cash bonds to do everything that we need to do along with Health Life Safety Bonds. So, that is what we're looking for some guidance on tonight would be, are you guys okay with us going out, talking to these other districts? And if we can get 80% support, then indicating that we would go ahead and move to try and put the question on the ballot in March. So, that's really the ask tonight.
And what Greg and I would do in concert is schedule meetings with CFOs and superintendents, ask them to conduct formal conversations with their boards. And basically, we would say that based on the direction you give us this evening, if you give us this direction, we will go forward with those meetings and say, we are in if this percentage of districts is in. We set 80% because that would require most of the large districts in the county to go along with us. For example, it would be very difficult to get to 80% if Harlem said no. That was one of the reasons we set that number. So, this gives us, your direction would give us something tangible we could go forward with. You're still not formally committing to it. What you're saying is that if we get to 80%, then RPS would move forward. Because what we don't want to do is move forward with our resolution and put something on the ballot, have all the other districts sort of ride that. And the likelihood of that passing is very low. If they are committed to being our partners in this, and we can gain their commitments based on your contingent commitment, I guess would be one way to say it. It's kind of an awkward way to phrase it. But basically, we'd be saying, RPS's board is committed. If enough of you are committed, then we could bring that feedback back to you, and then we could all kind of time it where we collectively pass our resolutions at the same time, and then put it on the ballot.
If we were to get that 80%, when would we know? I mean, when is...
Dr. Brown and I would be committing to know by September, I think is what we're saying.
Yeah, I think, I really feel like if we don't know by then, it's going to be too late.
Is this something, we're going to have like the town halls before school starts in August regarding this current budget, right?
This would be just for, this wouldn't be for the budget. This is different than the budget.
Okay.
So, this is just on how to pursue the funding for the Facility Master Plan.
Okay.
Yeah. So, this one wouldn't necessarily be like, you know, open meetings for that kind of stuff. The education process would come after we knew we were going to put it on the ballot. So, and then we would have those meetings to educate the public and whatnot. Yeah.
So, I think we're looking for kind of, not a vote tonight, we're looking for direction from the board to pursue a strategy of 80%, or if you'd like to set the bar higher, or lower, or wherever. I don't think I'd want to set it lower than 80, because I don't think there'd be much chance it would pass. But we thought 80 was a minimum we should seek in terms of percentage participation from other school districts in Winnebago County. But we're looking for sort of consensus from the board to at least pursue that with the CFOs, superintendents, and ultimately their boards to take the temperature of whether or not we have partners or not on this.
Vice President Bennett, did you have your light on?
I was waiting to see if anybody else had a comment before I made mine.
I was going to ask if there had ever been, if there had ever been any consideration to doing less than 1% and what that would look like if it was a half a percent or something.
Sure. I mean, that's always an option. You have to do it in quarter percent increments. So, that's the only thing. And it could be 25, it could be 50, 75, or 1, you know? And that could be part of our conversation with the other districts, too. You know, if you're not interested in one, would you be willing to support, you know, 50 cents? Something like that, or a half a percent?
I just have a point of information. Is it customary to, for boards to vote in support of a master's facility plan without a plan to pay for?
Well, we have a plan to pay for it. It's just, this is just another alternative way to pay for it that actually takes some pressure off our existing taxpayers and allows sales tax to actually be generated, you know, throughout the community, especially when roughly 60% of the sales tax coming into Winnebago County is from people that are outside of our county. It's a nice way to let other people that use our, come in and use our facilities for athletic events and things like this to actually help us pay the cost of our facilities. So, we have a plan for financing the facility improvements. This is just one of the options on a way to do it.
Yes. And if the board gives us direction not to pursue this, then we control this decision countywide, because we have more than 50% of the students. The reason we would be asking other school districts, if the board wanted us to pursue this as a potential option, is because that would be a different way for the entire county to fund facilities, projects. And we would need their partnership for it likely to be successful at the ballot box. But to be clear, we can fund this a different way.
Vice President Bennett?
Okay, you previously presented a map that had all of the different counties that do have the sales tax versus the ones that don't. And it's significant amount of counties in Illinois, for example, just only talking about Illinois, that do have this as their way for different funding. So, I would be in support of moving forward and talking with other districts to see what their interest is. I also, just for the record, like the wording to include the student resource officers and the mental health professionals. I think those are very large chunks of budgets that could be allocated for other things, just for example, and are very needed in our district. And in addition, we could fund more of them of what we already have in our budget. So, I like the threshold of 80%, specifically when it's 80% of students. So, the representation would be the larger districts, the larger amounts of students, because they would also be receiving the larger amounts, given RPS has a significant chunk of that. But I like the idea that it's not increase in property taxes, which I think has been a commitment we have made and we hope to be able to continue to make. So, I also think just with the mental health sales tax, people have been overwhelmingly more supportive of that year over year, because they've been able to see how many individuals have been served with the tax, what's been built, what's been done with the tax. So, I think the same flip of that is what we can show of what we've done for improvements, to our infrastructure improvements, to our buildings, the safety of our buildings, the mental health of our students, the security, which we know we need for our buildings. So, I am in support of the conversations.
I'm in support of moving forward, engaging in interest with other districts.
I also agree.
I would also support moving forward.
I support conversations. I will just say that. I, well, I'll just say that. That's all.
I'm in support as well.
You know, leave it to me to be undecided.
You can take time to think of it. Think about it for two more weeks.
Absolutely. And I think I will. But you got enough to have a consensus on.
Okay, thank you. All right, now some fun stuff. The budget. So, yesterday, we received some information that the federal government was going to suspend sending out money that they had already budgeted for the current fiscal year for all of the grants except for Title I. So, right now, we do not know whether we have any funding for Title III. We do not know whether we have any money for Title IV and some of the other smaller grants that you saw tonight and some of these budget presentations. So, we do not know how this is going to work. So, what I'm going to tell you is this is what it looks like today. In two weeks, it could look very different. We just kind of have to go with what, you know, we can control. And this stuff is outside our control right now. And some of these contracts and other things that you've seen presented in the budgets over the last couple of months are things that if we had to pull back some on, we could probably do it. You know, could we sustain some of this stuff if it had to flip over and wasn't grant funded? Yeah, we could probably do it, too. So, we're just going to have to be really, really careful as we wade into the beginning of the school year here. So, just a couple of the highlights that I want to point out, and I'm not going to go through every one of these slides. This presentation is essentially the one that you just saw two weeks ago. So, really what I want to focus on are the last two bullet points down there. You know, this said that we're preparing for a time when federal dollars can no longer be counted on. We're there. So, you know, we're going to have to start looking different. And we also need to start preparing for reduced state funding. We already saw that, you know, in the cut to evidence-based funding. They cut $43 million out of the governor's proposed budget this year. Luckily, it doesn't look like it's going to affect us because it came at the property tax relief grant. The thing that did hit us today was when we opened up the teacher vacancy grant, which you've also heard about, that we've been using to fund student-teacher stipends and housing and things like that. That grant was actually cut from $702,000 down to $468,000. And I just saw that about 3 o'clock this afternoon. So, you know, we're already starting to see it on the state side, too. And I would highly anticipate that next year, or maybe even going into next spring, that the state might actually have to prorate some dollars, meaning they wouldn't distribute the full amount of evidence-based funding and maybe some other things, just like they've had to do in prior years when they came up short in the springtime. So, that's just something that I think we're going to have to be keenly aware of, you know, as we go into the next year. So, the strategic objectives and focus, we reviewed these last time around, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these. I'm going to go through the budget assumptions. Nothing on here has changed from two weeks ago. You know, we were consistent on that. The only thing that we did update was CPPRT. We think that, you know, that's going to remain flat about what we got this year. So, that was actually a little bit of an uptick. So, that was good. We did have to allocate more money into the Ed Fund with some of the corporate personal property replacement tax because of how short we were running there. And I'll show you a slide in a few minutes that'll really underscore that. Again, this is the evidence-based funding. We don't think that we're going to see any impact on that. This year, we're still expecting to see around $10 million. We're not going to know that until after the budget's actually approved in August. But we feel pretty confident that we're going to get that. Again, same slide you saw last time with our property tax revenue breakdowns and some of the assumptions we've made there. You can see the components of the tax increase over the last couple of years on that slide. Again, no change from last time. The CPPRT number is the one that we updated. So, FY '26, last month, we were showing a decrease down around 30 million. We believe now, based on some projections from the state, we're going to be about 32.25. So, that was good. We picked up a couple of million dollars. Overall expenditures, same assumptions on those. These fund ones are the same, except for now, we've shown you what the allocations are of the corporate personal property replacement tax. We did not know how we were going to allocate those monies until we actually had a better estimate. So, 12 million of the 32 million is going into Fund 10, which is the Ed Fund. Expenses there are the same. We're allocating about $9.5 million into the O&M Fund, which is Fund 20. Last year, we had over $12 million that we put into there. But we really need the money in the Ed Fund this year. We think with the fund balance and everything we have in Fund 20, we're going to be okay. That's one we're going to have to watch going forward. Fund 30, I just want to talk about just a second, because with all the craziness going on in Washington DC, we get a US Treasury subsidy on the 2016 bonds that we have outstanding. I'm nervous that this is something that might go away. We actually have enough money if we call the bonds in December of this year to go ahead and pay them off. You know, we would get one more of these subsidy payments in December that would help us get over the hump on paying these bonds off. So, I'm thinking that we're probably going to, in the next month or two, we're going to recommend to you guys that we go ahead and call these bonds and pay these off, just so we're not taking a chance that something crazy is going to happen a year from now and this subsidy is going to go away. So, normally, I would say, yeah, let's use somebody else's money. This is one of those things, we're giving the surprises in the last couple of weeks that, you know, I'm just not confident that this Treasury subsidy is going to be there for qualified school construction bonds. So, that may be something that we talk to you guys about in the next couple of months. So, other than that, you know, again, potential payoff for those bonds, just because we don't want to leave anything to chance. We had allocated in the past CPPRT dollars to Fund 40, which is our transportation fund. We did have to strip those dollars out, and those went into the Ed Fund this year. So, you know, we're, this is a fund we're going to have to keep an eye on in the future, because the state categorical funding is way down on this one, too. So, we're just going to have to keep an eye on our transportation costs. Capital spending, you know, we did plug money back in for bus replacements this year, which we needed to do. Fund 50, the CPPRT contribution, there's a statutory contribution that we have to set aside. So, that's consistent year to year. No changes there on any of those. 60, again, we're anticipating a bond sale this year. And then, we do have a CPPR allocation of 10 million for the Facility Master Plan, which we've been doing for the last couple of years to set aside the 30 million that we were going to do for the projects. We reviewed the projects last month. Mike had talked about these two, and he made his presentation. You know, there's a lot of buildings that are getting touch in this next year, which is great. Fund 70, that's the working cash. We may end up doing some internal transfers this year to help balance out the budget a little bit. Right now, we don't know whether we'll need to do that. Fund 80 is where we pay all of our torque costs out of, our insurance and whatnot. That is something that, you know, we're continuing to see some pretty big increases on insurance costs. You always used to think of the coasts, you know, where they had, you know, big storms and whatnot. The last few years with all the increases in the tornadoes and everything, the Midwest has actually seen higher property tech, or higher property insurance increases than the coast have. And, you know, that's a big one for us. Insurance increasing in security services, we're anticipating those. You guys have seen those contracts go through already. And then Fund 90, we don't think we need to allocate any CPPRT for that. We have enough cash in that fund. So, those are the big ones. Life safety projects there that we reviewed last month as well. So, here's the budget summary. The federal dollars, you can see, are continuing to reduce down. This obviously didn't take into account anything we've heard in the last couple of days. So, we probably won't know on those, you know, could not even be until October that we know on that funding source. Expenditures, very similar to what you saw last time around. Biggest expenses, obviously, are salary and benefits. So, here's just kind of a summary slide here on the budget. So, we talked about this. We do have an operating fund deficit of about 3.8 million. That's up a little bit from what you saw last time. There were a couple of things that people had not informed us of when we were originally compiling the budget that we had to add in. Healthcare deficit, you know, we're hoping we can manage that down this year, but that's our best projection of that. We talked about the soup loss in the food service last time. And really, we're just going to manage the heck out of this budget all year long. And federal revenue surprises could happen. Well, after we finalize the budget next month, we already got one yesterday. So, it's going to be a tough budget year. We're going to do our best to manage down to, you know, break even. And that's about all we can do on this one right now. So, our recommendation is to approve the tentative budget that's going to come before you at the July meeting. And the final budget is not going to change from this unless we get some kind of, you know, known change in the federal funding. Other than that, what you're seeing here is what you're going to see for the final budget in August. So, questions on all that good news? This is just numbers on what I just talked about.
So, I am, I can't say that I am surprised at all. But I recall last... So, I am, I can't say that I am surprised at all, but I recall, um, last year, I think I saw this coming. We've had a streak of, in my opinion, making rapid decisions where it relates to cost. So many of the things that we supported where it relates to funding, and maybe it doesn't affect the budget, but we have, we've had a lot of changes or, and concerns. We saw the concern coming, and I don't think, well, what do you think, Dr. Brown? Could we, was there anything we could have done differently?
I think there's probably some adjustments that we could have made, you know, this past year. You know, we tried to make as many as we, as we could without upsetting the instructional programming. And, you know, it, it was always a focus on, you know, we don't want to take away anything at the building level, and we got to make sure that we're still putting the resources out to those. But you're right, this has been coming for two years, and it's going to continue to just kind of snowball over these next couple of years as we kind of level set. You know, the work that we're going to be doing, you know, really over these next few months to identify all of our initiatives, really figure out what the costs that are associated with all those initiatives, really figure out what we're getting return on our investment, on what really works. And then, just being able to stand up and say, okay, look, we're not going to do some of this stuff anymore. We know that people really like this, but it hasn't been proven effective, and we're going to have to stop doing some of the things that we've been doing in the past. We really are, and, and that'll happen on this next budget cycle as we go through it. So, it's, there's, there's going to be some heavy lifting that's going to, going to need to be done over the next few months. And so that's, that's a process that we're ready to kick off and, and really work hard at. But, you know, we're going to really target to probably be in that 10-plus million-dollar mark of things that we need to, to dial back on for next year. You know, that's probably a, a good marker for us.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions? President Carpenter.
Oh, thank you. So that, like you just said, $10 million range. So you put the operating fund deficit at 3.8, basically, and, and then healthcare is separate at 6.7, and so is that separate because?
Yeah, it's in an enterprise fund. And so, that, that really sits in kind of a, in a, in a different pocket of money, but when you saw the roll-up on that one slide, it's all added together with the Ed Fund deficit.
Okay, and so, like, the total projected deficit is about 10.5 million between the two things?
And we're really hoping on the healthcare side of things that we, we really, we had a bad claims year this year, and so, the projections are really, you know, factoring in having another bad claims year because you, you don't want to end up being really, really short on those kinds of things. And we're hoping that with, you know, some of the things that we can do with prescription drug costs and whatnot, and finding better alternatives for that, that we'll be able to reduce a pretty big chunk of money just on the prescription spend. Our prescription drug spend was up over 30% just in one year. It was just a dramatic increase.
All right, thank you.
This question might be more for Dr. Gallagher regarding the capital projects. We, when we, when we visited RISA, there was a concern regarding, uh, building had stopped regarding some support offices and, next to the cafeteria. So, I didn't get a response back when I asked you why they had stopped, besides the fact that you spoke to Mr. Phillips, and I don't see that, um, next year. So is this something that's going to be completed beforehand, or?
Actually, that's later on in the agenda, Ms. Chavez. It's actually going to be going out to bid and coming forward for approval.
Thank you, I did not see that.
Dr. Brown, in, in terms of options regarding the master facility plan, there was a mix, something that we could, like, mix it up. What would you recommend if we, like, mismatched some of the options? What, what does that look like?
Sure, so, if we did, let's say that, that the decision was made to go for a half a cent rather than a whole cent, there would probably not be enough money with the half a cent to be able to pay off all of the bonds. And so at that point, we would probably do, you know, some with the sales tax, pledging the sales tax revenue that comes in, and then the rest of that, we might be able to do with the working cash bonds, where we wouldn't necessarily have to go back out to referendum, because there'd be enough money coming in off of the sales tax to be able to pay a big chunk of that, where we could probably do the rest of it with non-referendum debt. So that would be like one of the hybrid options we could do. You know, another would, would be to just keep, keep issuing working cash bonds, you know, for a portion of it, and then do like a traditional referendum. You could do sales tax and a traditional referendum. I wouldn't ask two questions on the same ballot. You're going to get a no on both of them, so I, I wouldn't do that, but that's an option, too. You're better off asking for one or the other. You know, we're probably not going to get two bites of the apple here. So.
Thank you. Does any of the board members need any clarity on anything that he presented with the law? So, the tentative budget, we, we addressed all of that, right? There's, okay. Okay, the past school year, our in-school dental program served over 1,000, or 11,000, excuse me, students. Every student received an examination. One moment, please. An examination, and as needed, cleanings, sealants, and fluoride treatment. Of those examined, 6,750 students had cavities. 1,993 had urgent dental concerns, including abscesses, pain, or five or more cavities. We currently address these urgent needs through a limited treatment program, transporting students one day a week to Dr. Oates and Park City Dental. To date, we've completed 55 treatment plans, but 440 students with signed consents are still awaiting care. Our students face significant barriers to community dental treatment, including limited Medicaid providers. We only have five locally, and transportation challenges for families during business hours. Opening a dedicated dental clinic at the Quad CCEC with daily student transportation would dramatically improve access to critical dental care, ensuring timely treatment, pain relief, and better focuses, focus in the classroom for our students. Are there any questions on the dental service agreement with 205 district dental services? The dental service agreement with 205 dental, direct dental service will be brought forward for a vote at the July 15, 2025 board meeting. Our assessment data courses, failures, and persistent skill gaps reveal that many students aren't meeting grade level math expectations while Tier 1 core instruction is in place. We lack highly, high-quality, research-based Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention materials that align with our standards. This leads to inconsistent intervention, intervention efforts as educators often develop or locate their own resources, hindering effectiveness. Investing in comprehensive, evidence-based math intervention for Tier 2, small group support Tier 2 intensive individual instructions would enable us to provide consistent interventions across all school and grade levels, offer stronger support to school foundational skills, utilize progress monitoring tools to track student growth, ensure teachers have necessary support and training for effective implementation. Investment breakdown, total cost, 280,163, 200, I'm sorry, 280,163.93 cents. Training, B math, trans math, is that Freco? 18,400. Student-teacher materials, B math, trans math, 95,173. Student platform, Freco, 166,590.93. This investment will improve math proficiency, reduce long-term learning gaps, and bolster the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS implementation, with consistent, effective interventions tailored to student needs. Are there any questions on the supplemental math Tier 2 and Tier 3 resource? This will be brought to the July 15 board meeting. Preview of consent items. Make sure I have this right. Flip in. The consent agenda items for the planning and development committee, A, FB 25 to 38, RISA, middle school student support space, B, IFB 2601, emergency exit bike inspection. That completes the report of the planning and development committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Thank you. We are now at the governance committee. There are some board policies that are on the agenda. Board policy 5.25 is, would be revised to describe additional circumstances where accommodations may be ma, made for, made available for staff, including for pregnancy and childbirth and foreign employees sincerely held religious beliefs. Board policy 5.185 would be updated to clarify existing requirements related to serious health conditions, military caregiver leave, and required documentation related to the Family Medical Leave Act. Changes to board policy 6.145 reflect requirements of grant-funded state and federal migrant education programs. Board policy 6.150 would be revised to require accommodations for students who are pregnant, who have parenting applications, or who are victims of domestic or sexual violence. Board policy 6.280 would be updated to remove the reference to an outdated standardized assessment. Are there any comments or questions about any of the proposed policy changes? Ms. Bennett.
For policy 6.150, did we have a conversation recently about using more inclusive language, not necessarily gender-specific language? Because the word she is in the policy, just for example, or his or her.
I think that we attempt to be mindful of it, but we don't always catch it when we're looking for statutory updates, so certainly we can review with a, a lens towards that.
Okay, thank you. So just for the, um, sorry, it slid too fast, hold on. Oh, for number one, so on page two, number one, just in that sentence where it says she.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Oh, Ms. Pearson.
I do. So, um, I noticed that, uh, it's policy 5.25. There is a pretty lengthy administrative regulation for HR, but the policy itself was like, really short. And what, what is the purpose of that? And I would think HR would be, a policy related to HR would be more detailed.
Because the issues related to reasonable accommodation can be so very fact-specific, we try to capture the requirement, general requirements of the law in the policy, and then flesh it out more in the administrative regulation for the internal use of the department. So they rely more on the admin reg when they're trying to determine whether accommodation is appropriate and what that may look like. So the policy gives us that high-level look, and then the reg gives us a more fleshed-out analysis.
Okay, I just, that just got my attention. So, i, is it, should we expect an administrative regulation with each policy? I thought that that was something that we were going to visit, because other, the other policies that I didn't see, um, administrative regulation.
Yes, we've been trying to comply with the request to include the administrative regulation wherever one exists. Not every policy has one, but we've been trying to be more intentional with including them where it exists. Especially where there is potential consideration for changes to it as well, but we've been including them, whether they're proposed changes or not.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Oh, and then there are also governance consent items, which are 9A and 9B, meeting minutes, and freedom of information log. And next on the agenda is public speakers. I assume we don't have any public speakers. Thank you. And if there are no public speakers, then I would take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you all.